Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the August meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the Town of Niskuna. My name is Keith Frary. I'd like to welcome all of you here, some of you that are in the early sections of the agenda and those of you that are in for the long haul. So can we please call the roll?
Mr. Hoke?
Here.
Mr. Latif?
Here.
Ms. Pacheco?
Here.
Mr. Daly?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Antonakowski?
Here.
Chairperson Frary?
Here. The first thing I need to do is offer my apologies to Mr. Antonakowski because I butchered his name the entire meeting last meeting. So please accept my apology and I will do better.
Accepted.
Thank you. We deferred approval of the minutes at the last meeting from June 15th. There was a change that needed to be made on line 120 of that. I have checked the current meeting minutes and that change has been made. So let's deal with the, let's deal with those meeting minutes first. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from June 15th, 2022?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Mr. Hoke?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Abstain.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Antonakowski?
Yes.
Chairperson Frary?
Yes. Those minutes are approved. We also have a set of minutes from the July 20th meeting. Hopefully, anybody's had a chance to look those over. Any changes, corrections, additions, deletions? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the July 20, 2022 minutes?
Motion.
There's been a motion. Do I hear the second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Hoke?
Abstain.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Antonakowski?
Yes.
Mr., Chairperson Frary?
Yes. So those minutes are approved. Before we get started, just so everybody knows, we are going to be asked to come forward to the microphone. Please realize this meeting is being broadcast online as well as they're filming it. So we need to have you, if you would, please stand at the podium, speak into the microphone nice and loud so we're sure to get everything that you say. There, you'll notice when it comes time for members of the board to ask questions, the questions may seem odd or unusual. Please understand that this board has a set of criteria that we have to review and the questions typically are related to that criteria. So as best you can, you have questions or you're concerned, let us know, but as best you can, answer those questions so that the board can then make their decision. Okay? Can we call the first case?
Appeal of Ramishwar Singh for a variance from Section 220-4, Section 220-18A2, Section 220-13 Schedule IH, Section 220-18B3B, and Section 220-25B1A of the zoning ordinance of the Town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 2705 Balltown Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the RP Residential Professional Zoning District to construct a carport and maintain a, maintain and construct additional six-foot fencing. The carport is proposed in the front yard and partially within the front yard setback. The fence exceeds the height limit in the front and side yards. Section 220-4 states that the corner lots each street line shall be considered a front lot line. The property fronts on two streets, Balltown Road and Schwaber Lane. Schedule 220-18A2 states, except otherwise specified in this chapter, accessory structures are not permitted in the front yard of any lot. As proposed, the carport will be located in the front yards along Balltown Road and Schwaber Lane. Therefore, a location of the carport in the front yards requires a variance. Section 220-18B3B states that the required side and rear yard dimensions for major accessory structure shall be the same as applies to the principal building. As defined, major accessory structures are detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of 120 square feet. The carport at 500 square feet is a major accessory structure. Section 220-13 Schedule IH establishes front setback minimum of 30 feet. As proposed, the carport will be located 10 feet from the Schwaber Drive front property line. Therefore, a 20-foot front yard setback variance is required. Fence Section 220-25B1A permits the maximum height for fences located in the front and side yards to be four feet. As constructed and proposed, a six-foot fences and will be located in the front yards along Balltown Road and Schwaber Lane and also in the side yard. Therefore, a two-foot fence height variance is required. Eight notices were mailed out, zero responses, and we received a county referral.
The county deferred to local considerations and no significant countywide or intercommunity impact.
Okay. Could you please state your name, your address, and then tell us about your requested variances?
Yeah, Ramishwar Singh. Address is 2705 Balltown Road, Niskuna, New York, 12309.
Tell us what you're looking for.
Six-foot fencing along the perimeter of my house. It's open to three corner streets and there's no privacy.
These were your photographs, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's, on the record, we have 14 photographs that the applicant has presented. May we keep these?
Sure.
Okay. And we'd like to make them a part of the record if we can. We have three variances, correct? Location of carport. We have for the carport, a setback, front yard setback, and then we have the height of the fence. Anything else you'd like to add?
So you were saying the carport could only be in the front of the house or the back? Because now my front of the house is considered a back because of the development.
Right. You, some of us share a common bond on this issue. I live on a corner lot and because you live on two streets, you have two front yards.
Right.
And so part of the issue is, is you're looking to put the carport in what is the front yard because of the two streets.
Yes.
Have you investigated other locations for the carport? In other words, your house fronts Balltown, correct?
Yes.
The front door of your house is on Balltown.
Yes.
Have you tried to, I was looking at your, at your diagram.
Yeah.
Do you have that by chance with you?
No.
Okay. I think we've got two, so I'm going to ask you to come up and take this, please. So as I'm looking at your, your diagram, you have a dark shaded, is that where the carport's going to be located?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a reason, let's, that's a front yard, but let's look at it in terms of, as I'm facing the front of your property, is there a reason you can't move it further towards the back of your house?
Okay.
No, I'm just asking, is, is there a reason or why are you locating it there?
Because that seems to be the back of my house now, just because, you see where the driveway is?
I see the driveway.
Yeah, that's where I consider the front of my house because I, you know, driveway's there, so I consider it as the front. My mailbox is up there too as well.
Because of the shape of his property and the way the, the road curves around, does he have three front yards, Laura?
Yeah, he has three front yards. And I really, there's no sidewalk, there's no driveway, there's nothing that connects the house to Balltown Road. There is a door that faces Balltown Road, but the driveway, basically, so Schwaber is like, like a big loop and his driveway goes onto the Schwaber loop. He's got sort of a corner lot on Schwaber and then Balltown Road. And that one part of Schwaber that comes in is sort of the bottom of the lollipop.
Right. And where his driveway connects to Schwaber, that because of the, the road loops around, he's got three front yards?
He has three, yeah.
Okay. All right. So is there a reason instead of putting the, the carport towards the front, towards Balltown, could you put it someplace back towards the driveway or that side of Schwaber?
There's a bit of a, quite a bit of a slope there and
Your yard slopes down towards Schwaber?
Yeah, slope down towards Schwaber and heavily towards Balltown Road.
Looks like there's some type of easement on the, where you, the only place that you have a side yard, which is on the one side, you don't front a, a road. Is there some reason that you, could you put it over there somewhere?
There's a lot of trees there, like 15, I believe, 15 to 20 trees.
Okay. Are those along the property line or along the driveway or?
Uh, no, that's probably, I think, on the property line and
It looks like you have a shed there, is that right?
Oh, that, yeah, in the front there by the driveway, that's a shed.
Right. Could you put the carport somewhere in relation to the side the shed is on? That side of the driveway? Let me put it this way, is there some contour of the, of the ground, big huge trees, something that's there in the area where your shed is that would prevent you from putting the carport there?
Oh, I didn't want to put it there because just, you know, the, the landscape and the neighborhood is just, I didn't want to, it wouldn't look right there.
But you understand you're looking to put it right out in the front?
Yeah, but there will be a fence there.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Okay. It could be a four-foot fence. But we'll talk about the fence in a minute, okay?
Yeah, sure.
I'm just trying to see if there's some way we can, because you have three front yards, which is a little unusual. If there's some place that you could put it so that it wasn't in the front by Balltown and in the front where Schwaber meets Balltown, that it would be a little more
Another reason why I wanted that area is just, there's a lot of space there too. Just a lot of space.
Where do you park now?
Right next to the house.
On the dri, where the driveway is?
Go up the driveway to the left.
Okay. Is that your, part of your yard?
Yep. I have a door right to the side there. Where the, where the, it says two.
You're also looking to put, it looks like a six-foot fence from where, starting where the shed is? Is that right?
Yeah.
And all the way up towards Balltown across the front of your property and along Schwaber, right?
Yes.
Why do you need a six-foot fence?
Six-foot fence is because of the slope. There's just a huge slope. My house feel like it's up on a hill, so there's a huge slope there. I don't think the six-foot fence will look any different. I mean, it will help with the road noise, privacy from, there's a lot of cars coming to make a U-turn and there's no privacy there at all.
You couldn't put a four-foot fence up?
Because of the slope, like, and I'm so high up, like, the yard and everything with the house, everything is like at one level and then the, the yard is sloped down. So if you put the fence, it won't serve any purpose of privacy there.
Put a four-foot?
Put the four-foot, yes.
And I take it this is because of road noise and some privacy, it's not a safety issue, right?
I have two kids and they want to play out in the yard and
Well, you're not
We have a dog now.
I'm sorry. You're, you're not enclosing your yard with the fence, you're just putting it on three sides, right?
Oh, yes, yes. Not, it's not going to be enclosed, no. Just, just for privacy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other board members with questions?
Mr. Singh, when, when did you purchase the property?
Be two years, I
Two years ago? And, and you were aware of the traffic on Balltown Road when you purchased the property?
No.
No?
No, I wasn't familiar with Niskuna.
Okay. And how is your property unique to other properties on Balltown Road that would also potentially look for a, a fence?
Just because it's out, I know, out in the open. It's open to three streets, but it's literally open to like four, I don't know, all four sides.
And you indicated that your house is, is high up?
Yep.
In elevation compared to where you're planning on putting the fence, is that correct? You said there's a significant slope down?
Yeah. Where the slope is, that's where the fence will be.
Have you ascertained, you know, what the property would look like with the six-foot fence? Would it even, would it even secure the privacy that you're looking for?
It's such a, a slope, huge slope, I mean
Huge slope.
More, higher would be better, but, you know, I'm not going to push it.
Right. So you're not, you're not sure that even if you put a six-foot slope, it would actually provide you the privacy that you're looking for, correct?
It will than the four-foot.
It would better than a four-foot?
Better than a four-foot. And the noise reduction of the commercial vehicle traffic there and just the regular.
I see that you have in your application that one of the, the goals you were seeking to keep was wildlife out of your property, correct?
Yeah.
You, you would agree that with the, only enclosed on three sides, it's not going to keep wildlife out of your property, right?
Well, they're coming across the street from Balltown Road, most, mainly, the deers.
Okay. With respect to the carport, you have, it looks from your pictures that you have a significant gravel, gravel driveway, is that correct?
Driveway, it's blacktop, like
Blacktop?
Yeah.
And, and it looks like you have room for, let me just show you this, this picture here. What, could you, tell me what part of the house that is? You come up and get it.
That's, well, you guys consider that the, the back.
The back?
Yeah.
You consider the front?
Yeah, that's, my mailbox is at where the car is there, almost.
Okay.
And that's my driveway.
And it looks like you have parking spaces there available for at least three to four vehicles, correct?
Yes.
And I think Mr. Frary, the chairperson, indicated to you why you couldn't put a carport there. And I'm unclear on, on, on your answer to that because that looks like the
Yeah. I wanted a carport more out of the way, close to the, to the fence at the corner. So that way, it will help with the wind, you know, there won't be interference, the wind won't interfere with the carport. So that's what I feel.
Did you, so then you would have two, two access points to your property, so you would potentially be parking cars in the carport as well as along the driveway, correct? Or in the driveway?
Yep.
So that would
Well, the carport is mainly, I, I don't have a garage on my property.
Understood.
That's just to keep the snow off my vehicle, so
Okay.
Get to work in the morning.
But you would have an ability to park a significant, at least two more vehicles on your property. And right now you have an ability to park three or four vehicles on your property, right?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. And you're not, just so I understand, you're not interested in moving the carport from where you currently have it indicated on your diagram here?
I don't know, I just, I think that's a perfect, ideal area.
All right. One of my concerns, you know, sitting on this board with respect to the six-foot fence application, you know, we have a lot of applications for six-foot fences along Balltown Road and we have a, you know, we typically look at them fairly stringently just because everybody shares the same concerns that live on Balltown Road that you do. And I think in your application, you indicate good fencing makes a good neighbor and I think that, you know, the town code, and it's not, it's not something I came up with, but the town code indicates that, you know, we, we try to avoid fencing, six-foot fencing in the front yard for the very reason that, you know, maybe it doesn't create, you know, the neighborhoods that we're looking for. I don't know what the, you know, the, the thought process behind
There's, there's no one across the street from, from Balltown. It's all trees there. So I'm not trying to hide from anyone.
Okay. Have you looked at the option of getting some, like some arborvitae's or some type of bushes to just run across? It looks like you've got a number of trees between your property and Balltown Road.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Have you looked at, at the possibility of planting like arborvitae's or something that would shield your house, that would continue to grow and provide you with the privacy and, and noise buffer? Have you looked into that?
I did, but it, it won't help with like, if you're playing outdoors with, you know, basketball or a ball and, you know, the kids are running after the ball. It'll go through the trees as well as deers. It's not deer resistance. And I have some electrical lines there as well, along with the internet.
Well, the electrical lines sit along the edge of Balltown Road, right?
Yeah. But it runs, yep, it runs to the house.
Mr. Singh, have you, have you thought about limiting the scope of how much fencing you're looking for, for, with respect to your property? Have you thought about
How much fencing in total right there?
Well, no. I mean, I see that you're, you're, you know, as I posed, you're running it basically along the, you know, the property line, close to the property line, along three sides of your property. Have you thought about reducing the size of the fencing so that you can achieve some of your goals with respect to creating an, an area for your, your children to play without having it so expansive in terms of the six-foot fencing along the entire property line or three sides of the property?
Well, because of the slope, yeah, it's
Well, if it's slopes, I mean, if it's up closer to your house, then you're going to get more privacy, right?
Yeah, but it's not up close to the house, that's
No, as it's proposed, it's not up close to the house. What I'm suggesting to you is, have you thought about
Oh, bringing it closer?
Bringing it closer, then you wouldn't have to worry about the slope, you'd actually get more privacy because the
Yeah, but I'm losing property, I'm losing property. If I were to resell, it seems smaller.
Mr. Singh, just to clarify, that you've got easements adjacent to your property, certainly along Balltown Road, but is there also one between you and your neighbors to the south? That's the, the utility easement that seems to be yellow on the screen there?
That's, isn't that Schwaber Road?
Yes, running from Schwaber Road to Balltown?
Yeah.
I know it says easement, but I just want to understand what's happening in that space on the south side of your house because I think that's kind of south or southwest.
Okay.
Between you and your, the next neighbors?
Oh, between me and the neighbor, okay, got you.
Yep.
No, this is not in the way at all. I, I verified that, the grass line.
Is there anything growing in that area in the easement that helps shield what's happening in your yard from that, from the neighbors?
No, there's, that area there, there's, like I said, there's about 15 to 20 trees. That's pretty much it.
Okay. As I'm looking right now, the shed that's shown in the pictures that you provided is not up close to your house?
Yeah, but that area there, I'm, I'm not fencing that.
Right. I'm just trying to understand what's happening in an area that my colleagues have asked about in terms of the potential of placing the carport closer to where the garage, the driveway already is.
Oh, okay.
I'm just trying to understand what's happening in that area and why it's unsuitable?
Yeah, it's such a slope there, such a, and it's in an open area. It can, it can be affected by the wind. And like I said, the slope is just, where, where I have the carport there originally, it's just flat. And that's what I like, it's
Okay. Just so that I understand correctly, the pictures that have been presented, this, this shed
Yeah.
Is where compared to your house? When I'm looking at the diagram?
Yeah, it's, can I go there?
Okay. But this picture doesn't show it near any house? Like this belongs to the house that's behind you, not that house?
Yeah, there's a white house next to it, as you can see in the second picture, behind it.
Yes, this one here?
Yep, that's my neighbor.
Where's that white house?
Right behind the shed, basically.
Right, but that's the neighbor's house, that's not your house, correct?
No, it's my neighbor's house.
This is your neighbor's house, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So right now the shed is near your neighbor's house and there is a swing and other components in your backyard, correct?
Yes.
You also mentioned that the side facing Balltown Road has a very steep slope. And while you're not sure that a six-foot fence is going to give you the privacy that you need, that's what you're asking for, is it so steep that the kids aren't going to play there?
Uh, yeah, they'll, they'll be able to play there. I mean, it's, it's steep, but it's all grass, so it's
Okay, but they're not going to trip and it's not incredibly steep, it's only moderately steep and we want to understand what that steepness is.
Yeah, 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 it's not that steep, but it's, it's steep enough for the ball to keep rolling and go straight out to Balltown Road. That's why I didn't consider the privacy trees or arborvitae's.
Okay. I'm going to hold up this picture and see if
That's Balltown Road.
This is Balltown Road in the back and the little bit of paving here
Yeah.
is on the Balltown Road side of your house?
Yes. Correct.
So you're looking to have the kind of play area between that paving and the, the trees that are in that photo?
Yep, exactly.
Would you consider moving the carport in the plan closer to the Schwaber loop intersection with itself? I'm, I'm just trying to think about, well, also the question would be, how do you access that carport? How do you drive into it?
It'll be open, it's like
Open, so it'd be, but how would you drive into it? What direction would you come from?
Oh, coming from the driveway, from Schwaber.
So that would be making the driveway much longer and bigger, correct?
Uh, yeah, yeah. It's, it's, it's just blacktop all up next to the house too, as
Is it all blacktop? I know some of the pictures show a lot of gravelly area. I think, I think there's another picture closer to the corner.
Yeah, that area has some gravel there that I'm going to blacktop soon.
More of this one, yes. So if I may.
Yep.
Yep. So this picture here is kind of showing your, where your car parks
Yeah.
on the side of the driveway facing north. So why wouldn't the carport be there, is my question?
Because of the slope. That's, that's the only reason why.
But it appears that you're already parking a car there and it doesn't look very sloped, at least in my opinion. at least in my opinion. I'm just, I'm asking the questions. I'm trying to understand.
It's not my car, actually.
Well, I, I'm just trying to understand, um, why create a longer driveway when it could be closer to where you already park? Um, and you want to have your area for your children to play in and have that contiguous?
Yeah, just, just so I can have the car closer to my house, just, you know, grocery, you know, whatever. And I, I do a lot of maintenance on my vehicle myself, so being that it'll be on a slope, uh, sorry, even landscape there, it'll be a better access to.
Even though that's farther away from the door that you use mainly on the house?
No, it's actually close.
Okay, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, you did say that from your driveway into the house, that's where you usually go in and out of the house, correct?
Yes, I, I use the side door, not the, uh, not the one on Ball Town Road. There's one on Schwaber.
Okay, so on the, uh, the long side that's facing kind of up this way?
Yeah.
On the plan, that there's a side door?
Yeah.
That, okay, that was not clear before.
Yeah, so there's a door there, and there's a door in Ball Town Road. There's no door going towards the driveway.
There's no door going, going towards the driveway?
That's the main problem, uh, yeah. So it's better access there to the carport, to the house.
We're, we're trying to work with you here to see if we can come up with an alternative?
Yep.
That might eliminate the need to, to have a setback, put the carport in a place that's not out, right in the front yard.
Yeah.
I'm looking at these two pictures together.
Mm-hmm.
You see them?
Yep.
I see a driveway that goes to Schwaber.
Yes.
That's paved, right?
Yes.
Comes up to the end of the driveway, and you got a little, looks like a paved walkway, and you have your, your shed?
Mm-hmm.
As we face here, over, over on the left side.
Correct.
Just tell me why, you're parking cars in the carport, right?
Yeah.
And you only have one way to get into your property, which is a driveway, right?
Yeah, yes.
Why would you not want to put your carport right at the end of that driveway?
Because there's no, there's no door there to my house.
But you've got it put all the way over in the corner of your lot?
Yep, it's closer to my side door, Schwaber door, yeah. And, um.
So you wouldn't be willing to put it there, right? The carport?
Um.
How big's your carport?
I mean, whatever, uh, I can, whatever I can get.
Well, we don't, I don't believe we have a dimension on the carport, right?
Uh, it says 500 square feet.
500 square feet.
I think that's 25 by 25.
Okay, anybody else have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, uh, we got a couple of questions, but the fence is already up, or?
Yeah, I was, I was, uh, I started it. I had no idea. I needed a permit.
All right, so the fence is already up?
Yeah, oh, just, just partial of it, not all of it.
Okay, tell me, between the front of your house and the back of your house, is that part already up?
No.
It's not up?
No.
So?
Just the side of.
So you could still put a four feet in there? If it's not.
I guess I'll put a four, yeah.
Because it's not up, you haven't spent any money to do that, right?
Um, yeah, I guess. I mean, I kind of pre-ordered it, but I guess I can cancel it.
Okay, well, just like Mr. Hope said, we usually do not prove a lot of, there's got to be some uniqueness to prove it, but.
Yeah.
Uh, just want to make sure, which part of your fence is already up? Where is the ones already up?
Um, not the driveway part, the side, Schwaber Drive, where you enter from Ball Town Road.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Laura, is that, uh, that part that he already has up, is that okay with the town zoning?
No, that part was denied. That's still in the front yard.
Okay, so how far is that part that was denied? How, what length is that?
Um, I don't know that he measured that.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't measure it.
Do you know approximately what the width of the six-foot fence you have up already?
Yeah, it's about eight feet wide, so six panel, 48 feet.
Forty-eight feet. And, and where's that compared to you, to the back of your house? If it's 48, 48 feet, but how far is it from the front of the house to the back of the house?
I'm guessing.
Uh, I would say exact, to the front and the back of the house. Yeah.
Forty-eight feet?
Yep.
And that's not proof that you said, Laura? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Singh. I just have a couple of questions. Can you, um, just clarify for me the dimensions of the carport?
Um, I think I put 25 by 25.
Is it 25 by 25?
Yeah, I, I didn't purchase anything yet.
Okay, because as proposed, um, it will be a 20 by 25 carport. 25 by 25 would change the dimensional setbacks and those dimensions. Okay, thank you. So 20 by 25 is, is what you're proposing? 500 square feet?
Yeah, because I was planning to park two vehicles there.
And that, you're planning to park two vehicles? Any other equipment?
In the car, yeah, under the carport, yeah.
But what other equipment would you put under the carport?
No, two cars, two vehicles.
Two vehicles, okay.
Yeah.
Would you consider reducing the size of the carport? Or just two vehicles?
For just two vehicles? Um, yeah. I think it's about, not, uh, two vehicles is like, what, four, I don't know the size of two vehicles. Plus, I was accounting for door space.
And you're not, it sounds like you're not willing to consider moving that carport to the end of the driveway. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's just too far from the house.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
My only dumb question is the one that was never asked. When you moved there, was there, was there a garage or other type of structure?
No, nothing. I didn't think about it. I was just, uh, just, just where, uh, just thinking about my kids getting a better school district.
Yep, yep, I appreciate that.
It wasn't about me, it's just about my kids.
Yeah, yep. And, uh, putting aside the location of the carport, uh, the carport that you're proposing, what height is it going to have at its highest point?
Uh, I was told 10 feet.
And in your neighborhood, and I appreciate that across Ball Town Road, it's a field?
Yep.
And I appreciate that, uh, the houses are, uh, certain distance from each other. But are there any other carports?
Carports area?
Yeah.
Um, well, I didn't, my, well, I didn't mind putting it where the, uh, where the shed was, like, to the left.
Yeah, hold, hold tight, I'm interrupting, but the reason is because I, I may have asked a poor question. I was asking about your neighbors, not about you, you, the location of the carport on your, uh, property is proposed. I took, I took a look. You may have seen me. I parked the car. It's pretty obvious. I saw you, a female and a child in a swing set. But, uh, is there any other carports? Does your neighbor have a carport? Do any of your neighbors have?
They all have attached garage to the house. I have a farmhouse.
Yep, and, and I, and I appreciate, uh, I appreciate expense. Money, money doesn't fall from the sky.
Yeah.
But did you look into what it would cost to, uh, build a garage?
Well, my, my first initial goal was to put the garage where the tree was, but it's like 15 grand to just remove the trees.
Yeah, I appreciate that it's not cheap. So you looked into it, and there was an expense, and the first expense was tree removal?
Yeah, and another 20 grand for garage, so that's, I'm looking at, you know, 35 grand.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions by the board? Hearing none. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard on, on this, uh, these variances? Hearing none, uh, do we have a motion? By anyone on the board? Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead. Mr. Singh, unfortunately, I know in your application you talk about a fence making a good neighbor, but that is not generally the way that that's viewed in this town. Ball Town Road is, in that direction is the main access to the town. And this board traditionally does not approve unless we have a safety issue. The house sits very close to the road. Um, we've had other reasons as well that we've approved six-foot fences. Um, we've tried to give you a number of alternatives for location of the carport, um, but, uh, unless you're willing to move it, there's nothing we can really do about it. We, we very rarely, especially in these type of areas, approve carports, especially where this is located, because not only does it have to approve a carport, it requires a side yard setback, which also sits at right, almost at the corner of Ball Town and Schwaber, as opposed to in a location that traditionally would be a garage location. Um, in my view, this is not the least restrictive alternative that we could have for the carport. And again, I'm going to deal with, in my motion, I'm going to deal with all three of these variances together. I apologize for not saying that in the beginning. The carport needs to be placed someplace else, which may not affect the setback. So I think in terms of can you achieve your benefit, what you want to achieve with a lesser or least restrictive measure with the carport, that's clearly not the case. The fence, there are other alternatives that we traditionally point people to. Um, this isn't a security issue really, because you only have fence on two and a half sides of your yard. And in an issue of is it going to create an undesirable change, I think having the carport where you want to locate it and the fencing issue are going to cause undesirable change in the neighborhood. I think it's substantial from the standpoint that, you know, the, the carport is a fairly good-sized structure, which is now sitting right out on the road, and I think it's going to have an adverse physical and environmental effect because of where it's located, and then we have the six-foot fence.
I think from where the carport is in the road, that's about 30, 40 feet.
Hang on a sec, okay.
Yep.
Um, for those reasons, um, I'm going to move that we deny all three of the variances. Two being the, the carport needing the setback, and the third being the, the six-foot fence. There's been a motion made. Is there a second?
Okay, so can I move the?
Sir, you gotta, we're voting now, so we've kind of closed things up here. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second the, the motion, echoing the comments that, that you made regarding the balancing. Um, I will stress that, um, to me, the, the factor that, that there are other means to achieve the benefits, I underscore that as, um, one of my primary reasons. Um, I believe that, um, it will, in fact, change the character of the neighborhood as there's no, um, other carports in the area or in the neighborhood. I believe that is very substantial, um, on all fronts. And, um, while I believe that there's no adverse physical or environmental effects for this, um, I also see that, uh, it is self, self-created, um, it is in fact self-created. So, for those reasons, I, I second the motion.
There's been a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Hope?
Uh, yes, I just add, Mr. Singh, you know, we, and, and Mr. Frary indicated, uh, while he was speaking, that we've given you a number of potential suggestions, um, that might be considered acceptable to the board at some point in the future. You might want to think about that, go back to the, the, you know, proverbial drawing board.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but tonight, you know, I, I vote yes on the motion.
So do I need to come back if I move my location?
We got to finish the vote.
Okay.
Mr. Latif?
I'm going to, uh, I'm going to vote yes on the motion. Uh, just, uh, to put on the record, I do feel, uh, the alternative would have been there if you were, uh, to move the carport back a little bit to go with the four-feet fence from the back of the property, back of the house. So there's some options in there, and I didn't see those options, uh, to be on the table, so I'm going to vote yes for the motion.
Ms. Pacheco? I also vote yes, and will, uh, request that the applicant, as he moves forward and looks at this again, to, on another application, provide more information dimensionally about what was presented. There was a lot that was unclear. Thank you. Mr. Daley?
I'm going to vote yes.
Mr. Green?
I'm sympathetic to you because you have, uh, an arguably unique touch of the heart.
I don't think so.
But as, as I was listening, I think you got some alternatives here.
Yeah, yeah.
That might.
Okay.
Be perfect or exactly?
Right.
But might, uh, uh, be good enough?
Yeah.
To, to move, you know, your, uh, your living situation forward.
Okay.
So tonight, I, I have to vote yes on the motion.
Okay.
All right, but there's, there's a window here, I believe, of opportunity for you.
Okay, appreciate it.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes.
Chairperson Frary?
Yes, uh, I vote of, of 7-0. The variance requests are denied. Um, you may be able to work with the building department here at the town to, to see what alternatives you have, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Call the next case, please.
Appeal of Judith and Christopher Fenland for a variance from Section 220-18B1 and Section 220-18B2 of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna, as it applies to the property at 972 St. David's Lane, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 low-density residential zoning district, to construct an 18-foot by 36-foot in-ground pool exceeding the number and area of coverage for accessory structures. Accessory structures, Section 220-18B1, states that the total area coverage by accessory structures shall not exceed 50% of the allowed area of coverage on the minimum permitted lot size in the R1, R2, and, or R3 districts, or actual lot size, whichever is smaller. As applied, the allowed area of coverage is based on the minimum lot size and is 200, 2,250 square feet. There already exists 2,756 square feet of pre-existing non-conforming accessory structure coverage and a 2,014 variance on the property for an additional 49 square feet. The proposed in-ground pool, including the apron, adds 1,008 square feet, thus making the total accessory area coverage 3,813 square feet. Therefore, a 1,008-square-foot accessory structure area of coverage variance is required. Accessory structures, Section 220-18B2, states that there shall not be more than three accessory structures on a lot. There already exists four pre-existing non-conforming accessory structures and a 24. and a 24, 2014 variance for an additional hot tub, five total. As proposed, the pool, including a surrounding fence, add one accessory structure to these, which already pre-exist on the property. Therefore, a variance from this section is required. 16 notices were mailed out, zero responses.
Could you please state your name and tell us a little bit about your request?
Sure, thank you for having me. I'm Christopher Fenland, I'm here along with my wife Judith. As you know, we're here to apply for variance to install an in-ground pool. There's two reasons for the variance request. One is the cumulative number of accessory structures, as well as the square foot of all the accessory structures. So just a bit about the property. It's a historic three-acre property that was originally part of the Westinghouse Estate that's on Route 7. And so when we acquired it in 2017, it came with all of the existing accessory structures that are described in the map. And in the application, those include a barn, a garage, an ice house, and a caretaker's cottage, all of which date to the 1900s, I should say 1900, when the Westinghouse Estate was built. And in 2014, the prior owner sought a variance to install the hot tub. So all those accessory structures were there. When we purchased the property, we're looking for the variance to install one more with respect to the square footage. That allowance is based upon the minimum lot size in our residential area. Obviously, we have a substantially larger lot size than that minimum lot size. And so we don't think that that's going to substantially impact our property, the neighborhood, or any of our neighbors. Likewise, with respect to the number of permissible accessory structures, I believe that the maximum number is three. And that's also, as I understand it, based upon the typical lot size in Niskuna. And obviously, we have a substantially larger lot. The pool itself, the closest property boundary is about 90 feet away. We have the benefit of having that substantial lot size. It is not viewable from the road. It is not viewable on the other two neighbor's sides. The one neighbor from whom it's 90 feet away, we're going to install, you know, privacy bushes on that side for our benefit and theirs. And as I understand it, there's been no objections lodged by any of the neighbors. And so, and I don't expect any of them, you know, have any issue with this. So we think it's going to be minimally invasive. We don't think it's going to impact the quality of life in the neighborhood. And so for all those reasons, we request the variance, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions by the board?
Mr. Fenland, just as a prefatory note, with respect to the pool as proposed, are you planning, are you planning on any fencing?
Of course. In order to comply with town laws, we would absolutely put a fence around it. And as I understand it, that with the pool is considered one accessory structure, but you'll tell me if I'm incorrect.
That's my understanding as well, as long as it's on the apron of the pool, that that would not count as an accessory structure. That was the reason for my question, to make sure that we weren't going to be back with another application for an additional accessory structure in the future. With respect to the existing accessory structures, are you, are they currently in good shape, the structures?
I'm happy to report that they are. Given their age, you would expect maybe they would not be. But there is a large, what was called a working animal barn, that's set back from the road and barely visible from my house. Frankly, it's back in the woods, it has a metal roof, and it's intact. We have a caretaker's cottage that was a disrepair. When we moved into the house, we've since substantially improved it, and I'm happy to report it was my office during the COVID pandemic. And then we have an old ice house. Thankfully, refrigeration has dispensed the need for that. But it's in good repair and a garage also with a metal roof, so they are all in very good condition.
And one of the, one of the inquiries we have to engage in is whether there's a basis to reduce the variance application, and in your particular case, at least with respect to the the number of accessory structures you're seeking. One of those mitigation efforts would be to remove a different accessory structure. So with respect to the existing accessory structures, are they currently all in use?
They are. Each is presently used for storage, although I have not obtained price quotes. Obviously, there would be cost associated with destroying one of those structures. They all serve a useful purpose. The garage in the back is for, you know, sports equipment, canoes and such, you know, lawn mowers and things of that nature. The ice house is for storing mostly gardening equipment. It's adjacent to a garden that we've constructed on the property. The garage does what a garage does, and as I say, the cottage is put to productive economic use in the form of being my home office.
And how far back is the pool from St. David's Lane approximately, is it?
I don't have that measurement, only because it's not in the front yard, right? So it's, in fact, I think the way that it's depicted on here, it's sort of split across the back line of the house. So I don't know what our setback is from the road. It's pretty substantial. I would guess over 100 to 150 feet if I had to.
And I think you indicated when you were making your presentation that you cannot see the pool from the road, St. David's Lane?
That's correct. So by virtue of the change in elevation, as well as the positioning of the house and a substantial batch of trees in the front yard, it will not be visible from Balltown, from St. David's Lane, apologies.
And if you could just briefly speak as to, you know, why that location, why did you choose that location for the pool?
Frankly, it's the only location in the yard, notwithstanding the fact that we have three acres. Obviously, you want a pool where it's reasonably proximate to the home. It cannot be placed, as you're looking at this map, on the right side, both due to the slope and the dimensions of the property. And so that is the big grassy area that's proximate to our house and the most logical place to put it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your driveway, I noticed the garage is behind where the proposed pool would be.
Yeah, so we have a bit of a private road, I guess, you know, on our property. So the driveway leads from St. David's Lane to the front of the house, and then there's a separate loop that, as you're looking at this map, that goes around the right side of the house, behind what's labeled as structure number five, and then cuts over to structure number two, which is the garage.
Okay. So it actually loops around behind the house? Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's exactly right. So you see there, there's a sort of U-shape in the front of the house, that's kind of the walkway. And then, as you're looking at this map, if you go to the left or north side of the home, that's where the driveway goes. Whoever's managing the cursor is doing a great job. There you go. And then it drops into the garage back there.
And that's the barn in the far back of the property?
Exactly. And in fact, that lane continues straight down all the way into the back, so that it is accessible for storing campers and canoes and those sorts of things.
Thank you.
Or horses, if we decide to do that route.
Other questions by the board?
Just a couple of quick questions
Sure.
about the drainage and of the pool, like backwashing it and so on. What's the plans for all those?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So when you have a pool, in-ground pool, you have them, right?
In-ground, yep.
Yeah, so at some point, you will have to drain the pool and you backwash it. So you got to get all the chemical out of the pool and so on. So what's the plan for that?
Sure. My understanding from the installer, and I'll confess, this is the first pool that I will have owned, is that once you fill it up with water, you do not drain it seasonally. You put the cover over it, and then in the spring, you treat that water. You may have to supplement it, obviously, you know, due to leaking and during the summer months, evaporation. But there's no wholesale draining and refilling, and I think that's largely due to the cost of having to fill a pool with that volume of water.
So just so you know, I have a pool myself. Once in a while, you have to backwash it, and that will cause, that will give you the access to clean the filter and so on. So you would do that, and when you close it in the end of the year, you would have to drain some to get it below the skimmer and so on. So I was wondering, where would that water be going? Do you have neighbors? How, where, if you had to drain it?
Yeah.
Where would that water would be going?
That's a fair question. So if you look on the map here, between what we've identified as the garage and the barn is, and this isn't speaking environmentally, sort of a wetland area where it's, you know, ferns and undergrowth and trees. And, you know, we haven't used it, and I don't think anybody, owner of the property, has to plant grass or have a lawn back there. It's simply too wet. And so that is where we would, you know, run any drainage if we had to empty the pool in the way that you have described. And maybe sometime you can give me some tips on pool ownership, because it appears I have a bit to learn. So thank you for that. That much I've heard, that much I've heard.
A lot of work. And the thing about it, if you have the drainage pointing to the neighbor, and if they have a grass growing, you know, you're going to have chlorine in the pool, so that will kill their grasses and so on.
Yeah, thankfully, again, I don't know if you want to pull that map up again, but there are no residences back in that area. So it's a wooded area in the back, and then abutting that is a landlocked parcel owned by a property owner who has a home on Morgan, but itself, there's no residential structures on it, so it's all woods back there, essentially, is what I'm saying.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? No other questions by the board? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on the variance request? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to approve this variance for the applicant. And I'd like to specifically go through our criteria, so this way everybody on board. So can this benefit be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant? That's the best way that he found on his property. He can place that pool. Any undesirable change to the neighborhood? Actually, there's no neighbor can see the pool according to the applicant. Is the request substantial? It is substantial in some ways, but again, it's the best alternative that the applicant has put in there. Would it have any adverse physical or environmental effect? It sounds like from all the stuff, the question we talked about, it's not going to have any adverse effect on environment, especially, we talked about the drainage. Is the alleged difficulty self-created? In some ways, it is self-created, but that's the only option that the applicant had to put that pool in there. And as he mentioned, some of the variances were already in place in 2017 or before that. And for all these reasons, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve this variance. And there's two, I'm approving both, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, I did not bring that up, Mr. Latif. So your motion deals with both the variances together?
Yes.
Thank you. We have a motion, is there a second?
I second the motion for all reasons stated.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Hoak?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Daly? Mr. Green?
In addition to the reasons stated, just perhaps it's obvious, but for me, it's important to say, it wouldn't make sense to knock down any of the other things, to knock down the number of other structures. And also, it's important to me that, given the size and configuration, this is not anything that, in my mind, substantially changes the neighborhood. So for those reasons and the reasons stated, yes.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairperson Frary?
I'm going to vote yes, and I would also mention that because of the size of this lot with 2.9 acres, we very recently have approved a couple of accessory structure variances for that reason being that rather than putting a lot on a small lot, that there are, at least one of these is spaced out, and the applicant inherited them all. So for those reasons and all the reasons stated, I'm going to vote yes. Congratulations, 7-0, your variances are granted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Call the next case, please.
The appeal of Corinne Chatnick for a variance from Section 220-18B3B and Section 220-13 Schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna, as it applies to the property at 2312 Almeria Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the R2 medium-density residential zoning district, to construct a 26-foot by 26-foot garage, partially within the side and rear yard setback. Section 220-18B3B states that the required side and rear yard dimensions for major accessory structures shall be the same as applies to the principal building. As defined, major accessory structures are detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of 120 square feet. The garage at 676 square feet is a major accessory structure. Section 220-13 Schedule IC establishes a side setback minimum of 15 feet and a rear setback minimum of 20 feet. As proposed, the garage will be located five feet from the side property line and five feet from the rear property line. Therefore, both a 10-foot side, 10-foot side yard setback variance and a 15-foot rear yard setback variance are required. 17 notices were mailed, zero responses.
Thank you. Could you please state your name and your address and tell us a little bit about your request?
Sure. Hi, my name is Corinne Chatnick. I'm here with my partner, Andrew Franks, who also lives at the residence. I live at 2312 Almeria Road, Niskuna, New York. So I'm asking to build, to tear down an existing one-car garage and build a two-car garage set in the back corner of the property. It's not based on the zoning requirements. If I were to build any garage, no matter the size on my yard, it would be dead center of my backyard, which would really eliminate the yard. And where the driveway is, is next to the house, and and because the garage is so close to the house currently, we can't drive back, turn around, or anything. So we're forced to park in the front of the driveway and on the road when permitted by the town.
When did you purchase the house?
August 2019.
Okay, and this garage you're talking about that exists now, is it one-car?
Yes. Yes.
You can't park in it, you use it for storage now?
You can park in it, but you can't put anything else in it if there's a car in it.
So the new proposed garage, the 26-by-26 garage, is going to be located at the back of the property?
Yeah, so basically, the width from the property line it is now, but back.
So as you look at the garage that's there, it's just going to, it's sliding all the way back to the rear property line, and then obviously will be wide.
Expanded, yeah.
Now, what do you, how, your garage, or excuse me, your driveway, you said, runs along the side of the house?
Yes, I can, can I submit a few photos?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Do you have to lengthen your driveway when you put it in?
I'll do them all.
Thank you. The applicant has submitted seven photographs. Can we have these?
Sure.
And we'll make them a part of the record, please. So part of what you're going to do is have to lengthen your driveway, right?
Yeah, so basically, if you pull a car back between the area, between the house and the garage, that's it, like it's sort of stuck there. You can only back in and out. There's no way to make a, like a three-point turn or anything. So then we also, we're playing Tetris with our cars every day, like who comes out first for work, and then in the winter, it's even worse, because we can't park on the street.
Got you. Other questions by the board?
May I ask how old the current garage is? Do you know?
It's not on a deed, and it's not on the original property drawing that we got from the building department, which I think is what we use to draw our proposed garage on. The house is 1941, I believe. I don't know about the garage, but it is tilting in ways structures should not tilt.
Is there any way for us to know or determine the age of the existing garage? This is a question for the town.
It might be on the assessor's record. I can look that up if you guys want to keep asking questions. I'll see if I can find it.
Thank you.
Couple of questions. If you on the side where you have the five feet of the garage, what's next to that?
Grass.
On the right side, so do you have a neighbor's?
Yes, they have a chain-link fence. So it's garage, grass, chain-link fence.
So you will be five feet from that fence?
Yes.
Okay, and how about in the back? You gonna be also five feet to the back?
Yes.
You're five feet.
Yes, there's no fence there, they, the, both neighbors behind us have garages about the same size and distance from the property line that we're asking for, which is kind of what inspired us for that size and distance garage before we realized the zoning requirements.
And how far is their garage from your property?
Two to three feet.
Two to three feet?
It's very, very close.
Okay, thank you.
Katrina, the tax records show the garage at 1940.
Okay, so that's a pre-existing location adjacent to the property line, essentially.
Correct.
Thank you.
And the roof of the garage is gonna be sloping the same way the roof is sloping now, right? One side into your yard, one side into the?
Yes.
One of the things sometimes we have as a concern is, is especially if a garage or a structure is close to the property line, is runoff that may affect the neighbor's property, five feet is obviously closer than the normal or the required setback. Is it yard in the other side of the chain-link fence for your neighbor?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll just respectfully interrupt it a moment here because on the application, it seems that the garage doors are facing the driveway.
Yes.
I'm assuming, and the shed roof is draining towards the driveway with a gutter and a downspout, so it's not actually draining towards the adjacent neighbor.
Thank you.
According to what was submitted.
Thank you.
What about in the back, though?
It'll be draining towards their garage?
Okay, is there gutters planned on the back as well? The reason I ask is because, you know, sometimes crazy things happen, and yours drains there, and theirs drains over. Do you get water from their garage that you've noticed in that area of the yard?
I think a lot of people in Niskuna are familiar with their yards being kind of wet in the spring.
Wet anyway?
Yes.
Okay.
With standing water, so I'm not, I haven't noticed anything more additional than the rest of the yard.
Okay.
Other questions by the board?
Sure, Richard Green, how are you this evening?
Sorry?
Richard Green, I'm Richard Green.
Oh, hi.
How are you this evening?
Oh, good, how are you?
Instead of jumping right in with a question.
Hi.
When you, when you walk through the neighborhood, are some of the garages one-car garages? And some of the garages two-car garages?
I would say most are two, because as we've walked through the yard, we've pointed out, oh, we'd like our garage to look like this house is.
So if this, if your application were granted, you wouldn't be the first two-car garage in Old Niskuna and the Almeria Road neighborhood, correct?
No, and not the first to share this property line.
Thank you. I'll muffle back up.
Good evening, Ms. Chatnick.
Hi.
Just one question, have you considered regarding the rear setback, as there's another garage immediately to the rear, your property, using two to three feet, if I recall? Have you considered alleviating that, that rear setback and moving the garage up meet rear yard setback?
So instead of five feet from the rear?
So maintaining the rear yard setback, so you would move the, I think you're requesting a 15-foot rear yard setback. So instead, maintaining that 20-foot rear yard setback.
It wouldn't, like I said, if you drive back there, basically, the width between the house and the driveway is a car length, so it would eliminate the usefulness of that space to, to, we wouldn't be, if we had a two-car garage, you wouldn't be able to get past a car to get into the garage unless it was in the garage. It's a very tight, narrow space to maneuver around. So we need, we're trying to go back so that we can more easily.
So right now, you're facing that, that's the reason why you're pushing it back?
Yeah, because it's just, it's basically useless space.
I understand. I'm just trying to, you know, see if you've considered moving that, the garage up to alleviate the setback.
The garage that it would be close to in the back is sort of terraced up about two feet, too, so there's like stone, and then it's up elevated, so it's not like they're on the same plane anyway. If that helps. Basically, there's a stone wall between, my yard hits and they have a stone wall within the garage on top of it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
May I ask also, can you confirm how wide your property is? It's hard to read the.
Fifty feet.
Fifty feet total?
Yeah, which is why it would be the center of the yard if we were to adhere.
Thank you.
Any other questions by the board?
Just to clarify, I know it's 50 feet, and your garage is gonna be 26 feet. So that's, given the five on the right side, so that's 31 feet. So you still have 19 feet to the left, correct? What's going on on the left side of your garage?
Grass.
Okay, so you have a backyard there?
Yes.
So if you were to move the garage five more feet, that will eat up some of your backyard?
Yeah, it would be in the, basically, the center. And the, so then the driveway would have to drive back and then over, which would, that would more take, you're right.
You could drive straight to it right now?
Yes. So the plan would be to drive straight, slightly widen to get the second car in right where it needed to be while maintaining as much green space as possible.
Okay, one more question, and I'm done. The single garage you have right now?
Yes.
How far is that one? And you probably said that in the paper, and probably said it. How far is it from the side? Is it five feet?
Yes.
It is.
Mm-hmm.
So that's bidonair five feet, and how far from the back?
Thirty. Thirty-ish feet?
No, from the property in the back, the single one.
Yes, 30 feet.
About 30 feet. So you guys move in this garage 25 feet back, so you can have, you can turn around and so on.
Yes.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Any other questions by the board?
Just if I may forgive me, did you have a chance to talk to any of the neighbors about the change of the location of the garage?
Yes.
But hang on, hang on just a second, come on up.
Yeah, thank you.
Introduce yourself, and we know where you live, so.
My name's Andrew Franks, and I did speak to the neighbor directly behind us.
Yes.
He was all on board with it. We actually have kind of a no man's land between our properties with just kind of small trees and shrubbery that have just been kind of left to decay. So I've been cleaning that area up, and he'd love for me to see, you know, that area get cleaned up with a, you know, more neat property line. So the, by doing the garage, I'd be cleaning that whole area up, which would help water flow and everything, because it's kind of stagnant in that area. But he came over and talked to me about it yesterday, actually.
I don't know that I can require you to do that, or the board can, but are you making a commitment to actually gussy up that area?
Oh, yes, yeah, I plan on getting rid of the, there's a couple of decayed stumps and small trees and shrubs that are, are just kind of weeds that are back there. And I've been slowly cleaning them out as we've been nearing this project.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard? Hearing none, I'll remind everybody this time, which I should have before, is we have two variances. So anyone making a motion, please address whether it's one or both in your motion. It's, anyone wish to make a motion?
I will make a motion, Mr. Chairman. With respect to the test that we have to employ, the factors that we have to consider, this property is unique in a different way than the last application in that it's relatively narrow and small, and that poses unique challenges with respect to the placement of the garage on this lot. There's a pre-existing garage that's on the lot that isn't meeting the needs of the applicant. The applicant, the only feasible location while maintaining the green space on the property and allowing the two vehicles to be parked in the garage, which is the benefit the applicant is seeking, is to move the garage to the back corner of the property, necessitating the variances. So the benefit can't be achieved by any other feasible means. The variance won't create an undesirable change in the neighborhood as there's been discussion about a number of existing two-car garages. And in fact, the neighbor directly behind the applicant has a two-car garage at approximately the same place on their respective lot. Whether the variance is substantial, because of the size of the structure, I would say that the variance is substantial. But again, I don't, I don't find that to be determinative. And will the, there be any physical or environmental effects on the neighborhood or the district? We heard about water. I would note that the plans that were submitted by the applicant do address water in the sense that there are gutters on both sides of the roofing depicted in the diagrams that were submitted. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, like all applications, to a certain extent, the difficulty was self-created. However, that's rarely self-determinative and wouldn't be in this case. So for those reasons, I move to approve the application.
And you're dealing with both?
Correct.
We got a motion, is there a second?
I'll second the motion, if I may, and I will also add that it is a similar request to have a two-car garage in the neighborhood. I also live in Old Niskuna and have a two-car garage in a very similar situation, so I am sympathetic to that and agree with the other board members that it seems like it cannot be achieved by any other feasible means, that it's not a change in the neighborhood. Again, it is a substantial request, looking at the size and the closeness of the location to the property lines. Should not have environmental effects based on what you have planned to do. So I vote yes and make the second.
We have a motion and a second, please call the rule.
Mr. Hoke?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes, for all the reasons stated, and I want to tell the applicant a good job on the design and also on cleaning the property while you're doing the garage.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Daly?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
Yes, doesn't make sense to me, in this instance, moving the garage into the middle of the yard given the size of the lot. Also, I don't see any better way to end these arguments, you're always cautious. And for the reasons stated, and for the reasons that.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes.
Chairperson Frary?
Yes, for all the reasons stated, 7-0, your variances are granted. Good luck with your project.
Thanks very much, appreciate you hearing us out.
Can we call the next case?
The appeal of Alyssa Capello for a variance from Section 220-18A2 of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 1 Pinecrest Drive, Niskuna, New York, located in the R2 medium-density residential zoning district to construct an 11-foot by 24-foot in-ground pool in the front yard of the property. The property is a corner lot as defined by Section 220-4 and has frontages on Pinecrest Drive and Troy's Connected Road. Section 220-18A2 states, except otherwise specified in this chapter, accessory structures are not permitted in the front yard of any lot. As proposed, the pool is located in the front yard along Troy's Connected Road. Therefore, the location of the pool in the front yard requires a variance. Four notices were mailed, zero responses.
Good evening.
Good evening, could you please give us your name, your address, and tell us about your request?
My name's Alyssa Capello, I live at 1 Pinecrest Drive. I am requesting to put a pool in what is considered my front yard because I'm on a corner lot. So currently, there is a four-foot fence around the perimeter of my yard. I do have photos to share with you. I'm looking to put the pool within that fenced area to the right of my house, which I consider the side of my house, which is also the majority of where our yard is. Our home has a very small backyard, and I have the photos to show you. I've also prepared a diagram for you guys. On two of the diagrams, it shows where the pool would be if it met code, which would be at the top of my driveway, which has scattered elevation. And then the other one would be squeezed tight behind where, like, my back door is. And then here, so if you'd like, I can give these to you.
Please.
So I know that there are some doubles, but I just wanted to make sure you guys could see really well. I'll leave that one.
May I ask, while you're looking, you mentioned the four-foot fence. Does it go all the way around the backyard or the, I should say, all the yards? Is it contiguous to the house, does it completely enclose a yard?
It does, yep.
Thank you.
Yep. And we'll make those, we can keep those, and we'll make those a part of the record. So the four-foot fence Ms. Pacheco was referring to, that completely encloses the yard?
Yes.
Okay, and I noticed, at least on the, these aren't always accurate, on the photograph that's up, there's a great deal of vegetation along the Troy's Connected Road side and on the back of your house.
Yeah, so as you can see, there's several mature pine trees all along the perimeter of the back, which is nice for privacy. We wanted to place the pool where we're proposing also, so that the, you know, shrubbery doesn't get into the pool, excuse me.
Any questions by the board?
Can you describe what that, that bright line is that seems to be extending from your house towards?
The white line?
Yes.
That's my white fence.
So there is a, currently, that's the four-foot fence?
Mm-hmm, I believe that fence has been there since 2011? Or 2005?
So the pool's gonna then sit in that corner in between the white fence and the vegetation back in that area?
Yeah, where like that shadow is basically right there, where the sun hits.
Good evening, Ms. Capello.
Good evening.
Just have two questions regarding the back of the house. I noticed in the photos that there's a patio that's already in place there.
Yes, there is, just like a concrete slab. Eventually, we wanted to maybe do a deck or something nicer, but.
And it looks like that extends about halfway to the property line?
Yeah, it extends, I would say even more than halfway. So when you go out the back door, there's a very small, just steps, wooden steps, porch and steps, and then it lands onto a concrete slab that's maybe like 15 by 10, and it extends about 10 or 12 feet out from the house, leaving maybe six feet between of like land before you hit the fence.
Okay, so you would have to, you would have to remove that?
Completely remove all that.
Okay. My second question is, are there any plans to remove any of the vegetation to the side of the house or the back of the house?
Nope, we just meant to maintain what's there and just like trim it down so it doesn't get out of control.
Thank you.
Other questions by the board?
Yeah, a quick question for you. That white fence that shows in the picture there?
Yeah.
So I think you mentioned that goes all the way around the property?
Yes.
So.
So the fence is actually white along Pinecrest and Troy's Connected. So the fence is actually white along Pinecrest and Troy Connected, and then it turns into a dark wooden fence?
Okay.
That finishes the remainder. That's a bit taller.
So is that your garage on the other side?
On the other side of the green line?
Yes.
No, that's my neighbor.
Okay, that's your neighbor. So your property is, so I'm looking at your, I'm looking at the white fence in your house, and what's that?
This is my house.
Right?
This is my garage.
Okay, that's the one I was asking, yes.
Yeah. So like they kind of want me to put the pool here or like here.
Right, because that's the back of your yard.
Yeah. It would make sense to me that's where my garage would go, and we have cars there.
And if you come back to the mic, in the back of your yard, how deep is that from the house? In the back of your yard?
Yeah.
And I know you have a unique property, but in the back of your yard where they told you you have to put the pool?
Yeah.
How wide is it?
It's very narrow because of the trees. It might seem bigger on paper, but because of the trees, there's not much space. We would have to remove all those mature trees that have been there forever, which I don't think would be.
So you wouldn't be able to fit an 11-by-24 pool in there?
No. Nope, not unless we took the driveway out, and then we would have to move our garage.
Okay. All right.
Which is built into the house.
Yes, thank you.
It's attached.
Thank you.
Ms. Capello, can you describe to me how you use that area at the driveway end? Currently, you use the, is it a two-car garage in the house?
Yes, it's a two-car garage. It's currently used for storage and such. We have, you might have saw the Trans Am that goes in there sometimes. We also have a car trailer. My husband likes cars, so we usually have like I-Rocks and like old cars. So that's kind of like his little area to have those vehicles. He has talked about like getting a carport too, which would make more sense there. It would kind of like replace the trailer that we have there.
Right. So the area that my colleague was asking about that was suggesting that the pool go in that area that's currently being used as storage for the car trailer unit and as a workspace?
Yeah. Well, he doesn't work at all there. It's all well-kept and nice, but there is a trailer there. But it's like the basketball hoop with the driveway. If we were to put a pool there, we would have to remove like the whole top half of the driveway to like, also because the elevation dips a little bit, like as you hit the trees at the back of the property. So once you hit the top of the driveway, there's maybe 15 feet of scattered elevation. It kind of goes up and down, and then it dips, and then you have all the trees right there. So it would be a lot. We wouldn't be able to get a pool if we had to put it there. It would just be too much.
Other questions by the board?
It is all flat there, and it wouldn't have to be too close. As far as cleaning out the pool, there are drains like right there, and then there's wetlands across the street. But I'm sure if we had to remove water, we could just use the drains.
Ms. Capello, Ms. Capello, with respect to the side of your yard facing Balltown Road, it appears that you have vegetation on both sides of your fence. Is that correct?
Yes.
Route seven, I'm sorry. And you wouldn't be able to see this pool from Route seven?
Nope, you wouldn't be able to see it at all.
Thank you. Any other questions by the board? Hearing none. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard on the issue? This one, we just have the one variance. Does anyone wish to make a motion? Mr. Green?
Mr. Truman, I would move that the variance be granted. We have a situation from what I've heard that it does not appear that the benefit to be achieved could be done by any other reasonable or feasible manner. The testimony information provided, including the sketches, kind of shows that if a pool were placed where it should be placed, if we were going to follow the code, puts it in an awkward position in the property, just, it doesn't, to me at least, make big sense. Also, we heard that it would take away use in that area that is otherwise arguably properly suited for what's going on there. Also, I don't see, I see this as not being an undesirable change in the neighborhood. The fact is, the addition of the pool seems to me perhaps to be indeed a desirable change. Is this request substantial? It certainly is. I mean, you know, for better or worse, you have this corner lot with the, by, you know, zoning board definition, two, you know, front yards, but it's really a side yard. End of the buts, Troy Connected Road. It seems to me that there wouldn't be any adverse physical or environmental effects. The, is it self-created? Yes, it is. Relevant but not determinative in my humble estimation. Therefore, I would move that the application be granted.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second? Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll.
Mr. Hoak?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
I'm going to say yes in all the reason, and I'm going to say yes. We have had properties, well, I call them unique properties, and it looks like this is the best way we're supposed to do it for this property specifically.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Daley? Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes.
Chairperson Ferrari?
I'm going to vote yes as well. This is, again, I think, an appropriate placement, given the vegetation, given the fence. It's impossible to place it in the rear of the yard. And I think, given the alternatives, this is an appropriate placement. So for all the reasons stated, I'm going to vote yes. Congratulations. Your variance is granted, and good luck.
Thank you so much. It was very interesting coming here today. Appreciate it.
And not to torture the folks in the audience, but before we call the next case, I promised that we're going to take a five-minute break. So if you'll excuse us, we're going to go off the record for five minutes and take a quick break.
We did, but I very quietly moved them over to Laura. The pictures were from the last application, the photographs. Can't speak to those. Oh, you all right? Another set.
The suggestion was because of the recording, you still go on. There is a discussion for everyone.
Gotcha. We're back in session and called to order. Can you please read the next case?
Number five, appeal by David Blackstone for a variance from Section 220-18B3B and Section 220-13 Schedule IB of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 1322 Fox Hollow Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 low-density residential zoning district, to construct an 800-foot pool deck partially within the side yard setback. Section 220-18B3 states that the required side and rear yard dimensions for major accessory structures shall be the same as applies to the principal building as defined. A major accessory structure is detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of 120 square feet. The pool deck at 800 square feet is a major accessory structure. Section 220-13 Schedule IB establishes a side setback minimum of 20 feet. As proposed, the pool deck will be located 15 feet from the property line. Therefore, a five-foot side yard setback variance is required. Eleven notices were mailed, zero responses.
Mr. Blackstone here? Come on up. Give us your name, your address, and tell us a little bit about your request.
Good evening. I'm David Blackstone. I live at 1322 Fox Hollow Road, and I'm here requesting a variance for, a five-foot variance for a pool deck. We proposed that the space that is required, that is requiring the variance for the stairway down to the lower part of the deck, the pool, the top of the pool is six feet below the bottom of the egress. I live on a slope. I live on a hill. If it were a ski resort, it would be a black diamond. I could say, as a skier, I've gone down it. So I need stairs from the top, which would be level, straight out of the back of the bottom floor of my house in the back of the house. And the steps would go down to the pool. Because of where the pool is, I needed the stairs to be on one side or the other. Otherwise, they would be too close to the house. So we ended up planning the stairs to the bottom half of the deck where it accesses the pool to be on the northern side of the home. And it was just a, it was a mistake on my part. I misread the zoning, and I thought I was in a different district, the R1, R2. So we did plan to be pretty close to exactly at 15 feet. However, there was another reason why the stairs ended up on the northern side of our plans, and it has to do with the egress from the house and the placement of the pool.
It appears that in the back of the house, you have a patio?
Yes.
And so on that side, and I don't, on that side, the opposite side where you have the stairs, you couldn't put it there because of the patio?
I couldn't put it there because there's, I have two back doors. And because of where they are, and for safety reasons, I didn't want the stairs to be immediately outside of that door. I have two small children. We're just thinking, how fast can my two-year-old run? So we were planning it for safety reasons. We wanted to create the stairs down to the pool as far away from the doors as we could. They do have gates proposed to be in place with locks, but I errred on the side of safety.
And the only section that brings you into the need for a variance are those steps?
Yes. There's the platform where the steps go up to maybe four by four, and then the area that the steps lead down to. And then the area that the steps lead down to, I believe the dimensions are listed on the drawing I provided. But it's a total of 20 feet that the variance is needed for. The 20-foot section of the deck, which includes the stairs.
Right.
Chairman Ferry, as a point of clarification, we cited 15 feet from the side property line, but the recently submitted photo or dimension has one dimension that says 15 foot, two inches. If that's a true dimension, then we'd have to modify the, that's two inches more than was cited.
Just to the chain link fence. I believe the chain link fence and the property line do not share the same space.
So it'll still be more, it'll be, it'll be less than 15 feet?
The distance from the property line to the deck would be more than 15.
So because we want to make sure that we don't grant you a variance that doesn't get you where you need to go here.
Right.
How far from the property line is, are the steps that require the variance?
The steps that require the variance are approximately 15 feet and three inches from the property line. I believe the property line is just on the other side of the chain link fence, the northern side.
Okay. So if my math is correct, and I'll rely on this check out to check me here, we're looking at then four feet, nine inches actually is what you need?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we need to amend it then to four feet, nine inches? Or just to be safe, leave him at five?
If there is, I would say if there is a substantial benefit to the amending to the lower variance, we could, but it's probably safer to leave it at 15 for construction, yeah.
Yeah, just in case. So with your blessing, we're just going to leave it as is, if that's all right?
Yeah, that'll be fine.
Okay. All right. Any questions by the board?
Let's just get the, good, good evening. Richard Green.
Hello, Mr. Green.
We spoke.
Yeah.
Because you were kind enough to say, may I help you? And because you saw someone you did not know, obviously looking straight at your home.
We do get some bird watchers.
Yes.
We're at the top of a hill.
Yeah. Anyway, just for the record, while we were civil, it was 10 words or less. And I explained to you the best thing was for you to make your case in front of everyone here this evening, correct?
Yeah, yes.
When you're, when you're looking at the backyard, you're, and you're standing in your neighbor's backyards, which street are they on?
My neighbor's backyard viewpoint?
Right.
The one that's.
Viewmont?
That one.
Yes.
View something. Yes, my neighbor's in the back.
Yep.
Yes.
And when you're, when you're standing on the Viewmont and looking across the properties on Viewmont into your backyard, what are you looking across on your neighbor's property in the back?
You're looking across a drain adjustment?
Yeah. Are you looking across, excuse me, if I may, are you looking across like their, their backyards? Are you looking, are you looking across the part of the backyard that is a driveway?
Yes. When I come out, my back door of the bottom half of my, the ground floor of my house, my eye level is above the top of their roof. It's a significant drop in grade.
Yep. So your neighbor's in your back. Did you have a chance to talk to them about this application?
We told them that we were, that we were putting in a pool and planning to build a deck. And we asked them if we want, if they, they want us to put in a gate to the fence so they could come swimming.
Any objections from them?
No. The only objections we've gotten from any neighbors were not directed at me. That they wanted to preserve the trees along the property line while my neighbor to the north was cutting them down.
You have no control over that?
No. Well, he asked me what I thought he should do. I said, I like the trees, you can leave them. But I don't think I was the deciding factor.
Understood.
The same neighbors went on to cut down all of their trees the following year. So I think they like the sun.
Understood. All right. Thank you very much.
Any other questions by the board?
Yes, I have a few questions, Mr. Blackstone. And just for clarity of reading the plan that was submitted as additional material at the beginning of the meeting. The area that is where we're talking about granting the variance is where the stair is going, that 20-foot-long piece.
Correct.
That is the stair. And it's a multi-level deck. I just want to understand.
Yes, the, the part that is up by our back door is replacing an existing deck that was rotting. It had to be removed. You couldn't walk on it.
Okay. So the, the plans that you have in the package have two deck levels?
There are two levels with five stairs leading from the top level down to the bottom level, which accesses the pool. And the stairs with the access where the gate is at the top and the gate would, or the, the landing would be at the bottom, that is the area that's requiring the variance.
Right. And it's an above-ground pool, just for clarification?
It is an above-ground pool. However, the top of the pool is ground level. And the, the western side and towards the back is fully above ground. I dug it into the hill and installed a retaining wall that ended up being about seven feet tall.
Is there a fence around the backyard or on a side of the pool?
I have a chain link fence that goes all the way around the backyard. It fully encloses the yard from one side of the house to the other.
Thank you.
Any other questions by the board? Hearing none. Are there any, anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard? We have one variance here for the placement of the five-yard side yard setback. Does anyone wish to make a motion? Mr. Green?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I would move to grant the variance. I'm uncertain whether the benefit could be achieved by any other means feasible, particularly given the unique nature, not so unique, but unique enough that it's a very steep slope. The, I'm not, I'm not sure that could be done any other way without impeding upon the concerns that the applicant had with regard to the two-door, door, back doors. So. And I don't see a way where there could be some type of reduction of the request. So there, I don't see an undesirable change in neighborhood. You're replacing a deck that was, had, had seen better days with a newer deck?
Yes.
So there's, that's an improvement. So I think that would be a desirable change. I don't think it's going to change the, the neighborhood, seeing that there already is the, the old, the older deck in the pool. And the request is substantial. I don't see where it's going to have an adverse physical environmental effect. It's definitely self-created. But again, here, while certainly we would consider that factor, it's not determinative. So for those reasons, I would move to grant the application for the variance.
We have a motion. Do I have a second? We have a second. Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just have a question of clarification. In the request, it's calling this a detached accessory structure. I just want to make sure that I fully understand the word detached.
So the building inspectors are pretty fussy about this. But generally speaking, I mean, it can be with an inch of the home, but they will consider, even like with the pools, they consider them to be detached.
Okay, even if it was attached to the house? I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
So, you know, I looked at that. I mean, typically if the, you know, like the beams of the deck go into the house, then it's considered attached. But I put this one away already. Either this is maybe, do the beams of this deck go into the house? Or is it kind of?
No, the, the weight of the deck will be sitting on concrete inside of sonnet tubes. It'll be self-supporting.
Is, is the stairs not attached and that they're going to be self-supported, that's why?
They will have their own support, yeah.
And that's probably why, Laura, it's separate from the deck. It's not connected.
Yeah, even if it's very close and it looks connected. I mean, I don't understand the structural plans in the packet very well, but that could be. It may still need a variance though, because it couldn't go any closer than the existing home, which it still gets closer than 18 feet. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairperson Ferry?
Yes, for all the reasons stated. Seven, zero. Your variance is granted. Good luck with your project.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks. Call the next case, please.
The appeal of Rivers Ledge of Niskuna LLC for a variance from Section 220-17 Height Regulations of the Zoning Ordinance of Town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 2837 Aqueduct Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the planned unit development with a, with the R2 medium-density residential zoning district to construct a 66-unit senior apartment building exceeding the building height limit. Niskuna Town, Niskuna Zoning Code Section 220-17A Height Regulation states, "No building or structure shall exceed the height of 35 feet above the average finished grade adjoining the building unless otherwise specified in this chapter. The finished grade of the artificial, the finished grade of artificial berms or similar earth instructions created for insulation or other purposes adjacent to the building shall be disregarded in determination of the average finished grade. As proposed, the 12-page drawing type set entitled Overall Plan Phase Two by Brett Steenberg and the 24-page drawing set entitled Exterior Perspective View from Aqueduct Road by HCP Architects show the proposed 66-unit senior living building as 41 feet high. Therefore, a six-foot height variance is required. Fifteen notices were mailed, two responses, a county referral, and a planning board recommendation were received."
To whom this may concern, today I am writing in regards to the variance requested to the Rivers Ledge Apartments. The timing of this seems highly suspicious, in my opinion. The architects and the contractors knew all along that they wanted the extra six feet, but did not propose that in, in the beginning because they knew it would be denied. Instead, they waited until the other buildings were already built, adding no surprise that they are asking for this variance in Phase Two. These kinds of things are happening everywhere and we need to put a stop to it. These contractors, architects, lawyers, and whoever else are involved knew exactly what they are doing and how to get what they want. It's disgusting. People in general are getting away with too much. What's the point of having building codes? As a resident of Aqueduct Road with a front row view of these apartments, I say no, please do not give them the variance. Thank you for letting me voice my opinion. Eric and Lindsay Felpell, 2780 Aqueduct Road. To whom it may concern, the request for a variance for Rivers Ledge of Niskuna seems very suspiciously well-timed. They are nearly finished and the apartments are being occupied and they need a variance. Why didn't the architect know that the building codes were in Niskuna? And how did the town let this get by when the project was proposed? This is suddenly a hardship and needs a variance. It should never have been designed that way and they should not be granted a variance. They should redesign the building to the existing building codes. If they get away with this, so will other developers. And what is the point of having building codes? Thank you, Larry and Susan Felpell, 2774 Aqueduct Road. The county referral states that the Schenectady County approves of the proposal. And the planning board made the following recommendations. Effect on the comprehensive plan. Chairman Walsh asked Mr. Khan, co-project lead with Mr. Laflamme, if he thought granting the variance would have an effect on the comprehensive plan. Mr. Khan stated in his opinion it would have no effect. The planning board agreed with Mr. Khan via vote of 6-1. One board member indicated they felt it would have a small effect. Chairman Walsh asked Mr. Khan for his opinion, opinion on the suitability of use. Mr. Khan responded that he thinks it is a suitable use for the following reasons. The senior center building is part of a planned development district, so granting the height variance does not set a precedent beyond this approved planned unit development. The additional building height is necessary to achieve a residential pitched roof design. The planning board and architectural review board both support the 41-foot height pitched roof over a flat roof that would comply with the 35-foot height limit. Other planning board members noted that the identification of wetlands on the site required modification of the site plan from the two-story building in a total of approximately 100 units to one three-story building resulting in approximately 66 units. They also noted that 66-unit building has a smaller footprint, which results in less impervious surface at the site. The board also noted that allowing the height variance will allow for more diversity in the building design, including the potential to enclose the HVAC equipment. The planning board recommended that the zoning board of appeals grant the variance with a vote of seven, zero.
Okay. Campanera, please tell us who you are and tell us a little bit about your project.
For those of you that don't know me, my name is Victor Campanera. I'm with the Campanera Law Firm, PC. And I represent the owner of this property, who is the applicant for this area variance, height variance, we'll call it. I'm going to get to the comments that were made by the letters that were written, and they are inaccurate, untrue. And I'll explain to you why as I get into this 45-minute discussion. Sorry, it'll be a little bit less than that. I'm pretty sure that everybody's aware of this project, the Rivers Ledge project. I trust that people have been by it and see what's going on. But for the record, in 2016, the town board of the town of Niskuna granted a planned unit development for this project. For those of you that may not recall, the crux of this project was an old junkyard that used to be owned by Mr. Joseph Williams. And the junkyard was where the 160 apartments been built and have been built right now, which borders the river. During the process of the application for the PUD, back in 2016, there was discussion about acquiring additional lands. Would you, would it be possible for you to put up the full scale of the plan so I can explain to the board as I go along? So she's doing this, Laura. We acquired the Williams property, which is, as I said, where the 160 apartments are going. And then there is a bike trail. I don't know if you're familiar with it, but there's a bike trail. And then there's, you know, an area where you come to Aqueduct Road. That's the property that we acquired. And there was discussion by the town of perhaps building much-needed senior apartments. So what we did is we... by the town of perhaps building much-needed senior apartments. So, what we did is we acquired from the county, and I'm going to just step over here for a second. Thank you. So, the piece I was telling you about that was the junkyard is this larger piece where the 160 apartments have been built or are being built. The piece that I was telling you about, um, we bought three pieces of land right here between the bike trail and Aqueduct Road. The larger piece was owned by the county, and... Sorry. I'll keep it down here. Now, if you look at this plan, I want you to look at this area here, because what do you see there? You see two buildings. I'll just show this. So, you'll, you see the, the two buildings that were proposed, and when we first started this project, there was a proposal to put 100 senior apartments in those two buildings, 50 and 50. And what happened along the way is, unlike what the letters that Laura just read, that we knew what was going on and we should have accommodated for this, we didn't know at the time, when we bought this property from the county, where we're going to put the 155 and older apartments, that a substantial part of that property was constrained by Corps of Engineers wetland. So, this was a project that was approved, and we moved full steam ahead with the project. Obviously, the crux of the apartments are built, and now we're going to Phase II. This is what it's in the, in the PDD, PUD, it's the Phase II process of where we're going now, which is the construction of the senior apartments. So, as part of the PDD or PUD that was approved, there was a lot of conditions placed by the town resolution and by the planning board. Those conditions included, uh, construction of a gravity sewer main, which basically extends from here to the city of Schenectady Sewer Plant. Um, and not only were we asked to install this, but we also were asked to make it large enough to accommodate for additional developers as they came along. We were also asked to, uh, be responsible for a water main connection, improvements to the public park to the tune of about $400,000, and also a $1 million development fee that was paid. The total cost of the requested modifications we made for sewer, water, improvement to the park, uh, was about $4 million. Thereafter, we received the planning board commission's approval in December of 2017, of course, subject to Phase I, which is the construction of the apartments, and Phase II, which is the construction of the, uh, of the senior housing. So, as we proceeded to get, or tried to get our approvals, Army Corps came in and said, "Not so fast. You can't put the two buildings there," as you're, as I'm, as you're looking at this right now. And if you look at the site plan to the right, you'll see the one building. They basically said, and we hired, uh, an eminent environmental attorney, Teresa Beckner, to look into this, um, and after she dealt with Army Corps, the ultimate decision was, final decision was, "You can't use the right side of the property. We're only going to allow you to use the property that we're now proposing, the three-story building with 66 units instead of 100." And that's the building that Laura showed when we first started, but don't change yet, okay? So, uh, that's where we're, where we're at. And so, back and forth with Army Corps, they concluded that they had jurisdiction over this property. It resulted in this unusable property being cut, basically cutting in half our 100-unit seniors to 66. And one of the other things that we had to do is do what's called a PUD stream mitigation of 265 feet, uh, because there was a stream that's geographically located close to the site. This is Army Corps. And what we agreed to do is complete a project at the Animal Protective Foundation located at 53 Maple Avenue in Schenectady, New York, in order to meet the one-for-one mitigation as per the Army Corps of Engineers' current criteria, and the developer will perform what's called a stream erosion control at 53 Maple Avenue site at an estimated cost of an additional $100,000. Due to the above, we're now proposing what we've, you saw when we first came in, instead of the two buildings that were going to be 35 feet high, we're now proposing one building that's going to be with the roof, peak roof, 41 feet high, rather than the, your mandated 35-feet height. So, Laura, if you could put that back up again, please, the proposal? So, what are we looking for? We're looking for a six-foot area variance. It's called a height variance. And no, we did not know about this, as alluded to in the two letters that were read into the record beforehand. We didn't know about it because we didn't know that the Army Corps was going to come in and shut us down and say, "No, you can't use the two buildings. You can't build the two buildings. You can't put 100 units, and you can only put 66." And in order to do that, this is what we're proposing. This view that you're looking at is a view on a side, basically looking towards the bridge. And I don't know if you can see it here, but basically, the building, the floor of the building is four feet lower than Aqueduct Road. You see the sightlines there. You see the trees, and that's the elevation. So, you see the car there on the right, just above Laura's L. That's four feet higher than the floor area of where we would start the building. So, effectively speaking, from that vantage point, you're looking at basically two feet of a variance, but I understand it's a six-foot variance. Now, we didn't have to come to this board, but we wanted to, because we wanted to create a building with a roof such as this, rather than a flat roof. And Laura, do you have that, that you can show the board? So, that building is 35 feet high that you're looking at. We don't need a variance. Planning Board has already seen it. The only reason why we're here is because we believe, as does the planning board by a vote of seven to zero, that the other proposal with the peak roof is far more aesthetically pleasing than what you're looking at with a flat roof. And that's essentially it. Obviously, this board has granted other height variances to other applicants. 2125 River Road, uh, an ADD Development and Management who received a 12-foot height variance for final building height of 47 feet on 22205. Height variance granted to 1769 Union Street received a five-foot height variance on 31915, and one research circle for a 20-foot height variance of 55 feet on 31722. Obviously, we're, we're dealing with an area variance. What does that mean? It's a balancing test, benefit to the applicant versus the detriment to surrounding properties. I've listened to the two letters that were read. Um, I'm not 100% sure where these folks live in relation to where this proposed building's going to be, but the reason that we're here is not for the reasons or the indications indicated in that letter. It could be, it couldn't be any, any further from the truth. So, basically, under the code, you have the balancing test, and you have to go through the criteria. We feel, as does the planning board, that this is a better proposal. We don't need it. If the board decides you want a flat roof, or you don't want to grant us the variance, then we go with a flat roof. And that's our application. And just in case you need some real technical stuff, I've got the eminent Chuck Perfundi with me, who has worked this project since the very beginning. Chuck looks young, but he's 62 years old, but he can answer these questions. So, that's the application, and that's what we're requesting a six-foot height variance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Capanera. Any questions by the board?
I have a question, Mr. Capanera. Um, while it was stated in the application in your letters, you didn't just talk about this, but I just want to clarify for the record that the original proposal, uh, as part of the PUD with the two buildings in it, they were going to be two stories tall at a maximum of 30 feet, according to this record. Is that correct?
Were they 30 or 35 feet?
35.
35 feet, maximum height.
And that was within the zoning code, I believe?
Yes, that the maximum height allowed in this zone is 35 feet.
Thank you.
And what was the capacity of the two buildings?
100.
Okay, and, and we're at?
66.
66.
Yeah. That's the best we could do.
Any other questions by the board?
Couple of questions, Mr. Capanera. Mr. Latif here. Uh, I like, I like the design on the one you're proposing. Uh, the question I have for you, you mentioned, uh, to be leveled with Aqueduct, it looks like you're already four feet lower than Aqueduct.
We're four feet lower with the base, uh, the first floor than the crown of the road at Aqueduct. And, and they didn't mention this either. We're also providing 66 underground parking spots, which is a substantial cost to this project, uh, which would be underneath the floor of this building.
I saw that on, on the application. So, my question is, and the concern of the two people that they'd hope to, to us to deny the variance, then can you guys, and maybe the engineer can answer, there's any way to reduce this by two feet? There's any way? Because the six feet that you're asking for, it looks like to me the four feet already has been taken care of by the heights of the Aqueduct. Can you talk to me if you're, there's a way to reduce the two feet, um, instead of requesting six feet, that will be only four feet? And then, uh, if you were to look at it from the Aqueduct, it's basically 35 feet to that level?
Yes, sir. So, just to introduce myself for the record, Chuck Perfundi had a real estate development at Louie's Companies. And when we had looked at this, we've tried to minimize this as much as possible through the design process and coordination with the planning board. So, this is a minimum roof pitch for water, snow, right? So, we've already minimized that, that pitch of that roof to as low as it can go. And then also the, as, um, the plan said in their recommendation, we've created, uh, essentially like a bathtub. This isn't a typical pitched roof where the center of the building is the crown. These are, these are almost like false roofs that give a pitched roof, uh, idea with a bathtub in the middle to contain the RTU units. Um, keeps down noise, hides them, and ultimately creates a better aesthetic. Um, with that, we've lowered the roof line to a, a, a minimum slope for, for building code and for, uh, maintenance, and then also enough to contain the, the height of an RTU. So, it's been, I guess, contained as much as possible.
Okay. RTU is, I'm sorry, RTU?
So, the rooftop units, the HVAC units.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Gotcha.
So, talk to me about, um, you have three floors, and you have the roof, so I'm assuming that's an attic, right?
Uh, it's false. So, right, your, your roof is essentially the ceiling of your third floor, what, what floor, Joyce?
That's where my question's from. So, if that roof is third floor, uh, apartments, or, you know, if that's the roof for that, what is the height between each level? Because I think we had some, a building came in front of us years ago. I can't remember if that's from shop, right, or somewhere. They had similar, uh, thing, and I think, uh, we talked about the same thing. What is the height between every floor, if you don't mind?
Yeah, so if, if you scroll back to the one with, uh, the, a regular commercial parapet, that means the building height, so that, I don't know the dimension between floors, sir, but ultimately, if we remove that roof structure that you're discussing, that is what you'd get. So...
Right, right. That's a flat roof.
Flat roof, and, and the roof is essentially a, a continuation from that zero parapet, just creating a false gable.
Right. So, with this roof, you're good. You don't even need a variance.
Yes, sir.
So, again, I'm looking myself on the board, seeing if we can get this reduced by two feet. So, if you look at every floor, usually it's eight feet, 10 feet. What is the height between each floor?
Yeah, so I, I do, I believe it's, it's, uh, it'd be 35 divided by three. I don't do the calculation, but it's, uh, right now, we're using your, your minimum eight-foot ceiling height, but you have to leave room for MEPs, your mechanicals, electrical, plumbing, and fire sprinkler. That's built into that number, uh, above the eight-foot height.
All right. So, you, you said you looked at all these options. Did you look at that option to minimize the heights of the level of the floor? And I'm not saying the six feet, I'm saying two feet.
Um, yes. So, we've, we've, we've mitigated as much as possible. So, to bring the best, most transparent product in front of both boards, planning board and zoning board, we've mitigated to the nth degree. We can't gain anything out of the, um, the parapet, false gable, right? We can't gain anything out of the ceiling heights within the units, and we've ourselves to the minimum amount of, uh, room for your ductwork, fire sprinkler, and your plumbing.
All right. So, is each floor then equally, the heights of each floor equally even?
Yes, sir.
So, the third floor is not higher because of the feet?
No, sir.
Well, thank you for now for answering my question.
Yes.
The other thing I wanted to mention, too, is because of Army Corps' involvement and prohibition of us using the other half of the property, that's going to be left forever wild. So, you're gaining a lot more green space than what we originally proposed and that was originally approved by the, not only the town when they gave us the PUD, but also the planning board. I think what Chuck was saying is that when they looked at this and engineered it, it's the lowest they can go and still have the garage underneath the floor, and they can't get any lower with this fake roof, I'm going to call it, because it's really not a roof. It's, it's basically made to look like this to give it a residential look. Um, and I guess you can't go any less on the, um, the roof angle.
Because of maintenance.
Because of maintenance, yeah. So, I guess they studied all that.
I have some additional questions, probably more for Chuck. Um, so, thank you for, uh, being present here to answer these. Uh, if we were not granting the variance for the six feet and you went with the flat roof scenario, the rooftop equipment would still be up there, correct?
It would.
Would there be any effort to screen it?
You, we wouldn't be able to. You, it would be exposed at the maximum building height of the 35 feet.
Okay, so that gives me, leads me to my next question. In the section that you had cutting across the road showing the road four feet higher, uh, than your first floor level?
Yeah.
Did you go and look at the neighbors across the street, and I don't know if they are, uh, the people who wrote the letters or not, um, did you look at where their windows were, like in the top floor of their house were, is, and what they can see across the road? Uh, presumably, in the two-story scenario originally proposed, they'd be looking at a roof, I'm guessing, if they were in their upper floor. I'm just wondering if you did a study on that.
We didn't, but I would say that those neighboring properties across the street would have the same sightline vantage point at first floor than the car, right? And then some of those properties do have, just knowing the area and throughout the construction project, have a higher elevation. So, um, they would really be... So they would really be maybe coming in, again, a ballparking without doing a study, but maybe a vantage point of our second floor.
Okay, so.
Topography goes up as you go across. I drove over there the other day, and I just wanted to look for my own edification to see. There's a couple houses. And as you look across the street, the topography goes up, whereas this goes down, which is why the four-foot difference between the crown of Aqueduct Road and where the first floor would start.
Yes, I'm asking the question to kind of bring more clarification to the view, the sightlines for the neighbors, not just from the road.
Yes, yeah, so the, so vantage points would either be at the same sightlines as the car that you see in this illustration, or they would be higher than the car, which would grate in the sightline distance. You know, it wouldn't be 41 feet, it may be less.
Thank you.
Other questions by the board?
If I could speak to one other item that I, you know.
Sure, please.
Just through the process of running the first 160 units, we've received a vast majority of people that are interested in the 55-plus senior living experience that we've provided at other properties like Starbuck Island and Green Island that we've recently completed. We do have a lot of folks that we haven't opened up for leasing because we're still in approvals, but we've shown renditions of the building. And you know, there's a very large concentration of people that actually reside in Niskiuna that are looking to leave their single-family homes and come into like a maintenance-free living experience, short-term commitment, don't want to deal with the headache of a home. And they are 55-plus, meet the age restriction, restriction, and that building essentially has like an unofficial waiting list to it. So there is, I think, a need in the community for seniors, especially in Niskiuna, looking at other comps in the area. You know, this goes across the whole capital district, right? We're kind of a housing crisis right now, whether you're talking apartments or single-family homes, just from what the pandemic, you know, experience was with a lot of developers tabling their projects, right? So we're dealing with like a 1% vacancy factor in the geographic area for apartments, which is nearly fully rented. All of our properties are fully rented right now with waiting lists of 30 to 40 people. So I truly believe for the community as well that this property, especially for seniors, provides a niche housing component that will have great amenities for them. We're proposing, you know, the commercial spaces, but also, you know, low-impact fitness centers for them, libraries, reading rooms. They have access to all the amenities in the first 160 units, which has its own college-grade fitness center, pool, clubhouse. And as well, we're doing a small component where we have a tenant in one of our other commercial buildings that we're going to have come in once a week to provide haircuts for the seniors free of charge. So you know, I think it could provide good community base, too, for some of those folks that are looking to change their living experience and still remain within the town.
Thank you.
Since you mentioned this, any transportation for the seniors will be available there?
Yeah, so we're working with a few transportation outfits local to Schenectady County. Aside from that, we've worked with Laura in the planning department to provide CDTA access. So one of the other, I guess we could call it community benefit. I look at it as more of a benefit to our tenants, but we're providing a CDTA bus stop that provides safe access off-shoulder. And it also connects to the parking lot that's proposed to connect the Aqueduct Park and also provide parking for the Mohawk Hudson Bike Trail. So aside from transportation access, both private and public, and also sidewalk access, pedestrian access to some of the other mixed-use trails.
So since we mentioned transportation, is that going to increase the traffic on that property or on that road? Did you guys do any study on that?
We did. So part of the original PDD was a comprehensive traffic study that actually was based off 100 units. So through the planning board process and technical review with the TDE, all our engineering reports right now are actually overqualified for what we're proposing. All those reports, water, sewer, stormwater, and as well as traffic, was based off 100 unit exercise for the senior component, and we're now at 66.
So would you say it's going to be substantially increased?
No, sir. I would say minimum. You know, it's doctor's appointments and stuff, so if you saw maybe a van or two a day, that'd be all you're looking at. And we're not talking big commercial buses. They're just passenger vans.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I just have, I've got one question regarding the in closing of the, in screening of the HVAC equipment. Was there a cost study done for maintenance and upkeep of the HVAC system, enclosed and not enclosed?
No, so the, it's contained in the roof, but it's still open air. So it's not truly enclosed. It's just visually blocked by those roofs. So there shouldn't be any type of maintenance increase or decrease, depending on whether or not there's a parapet or.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
You're talking about traffic impact. You realize that you got General Electric up here in the hill?
Yes.
And you realize that most of those people that work up there work, live in Glenville? Did you know that?
I did not know that.
Okay, so they come down, Provinent, the hillside, the Aqueduct, and some go down Balltown over the bridge. But when you said there wasn't an impact, you're putting in, you got 166 units there now, you're putting in 66 more units. Are you trying to tell this board that there's not going to be an impact in traffic?
No, what I'm trying to tell the board is is that the engineering department that we hire, our engineers, the TDE, the town-designated engineer, and the planning board all reviewed our traffic study that was originally submitted under the PDD and the first 160-unit approval that included 100-unit outlook with the senior component. If that was approved, what I am saying is is that our proposal at 66 units, sir, is actually a reduction on what was originally approved, reviewed, and seen as not being a detrimental impact.
You really believe that there's no impact on traffic?
I don't, because you know, I.
Have you ever been at 4:30 going downhill side avenue to Aqueduct, Aqueduct over the Rexford Bridge, or Balltown down over the Rexford Bridge? Have you ever seen that trip?
Yeah, but would you say that traffic has resulted from?
Bumper to bumper.
But I don't know. Yeah, and.
I don't want to cut this off, but we're going to get a little far afield off of the height issue, so.
This has already been discussed and approved, so as far as the approval. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
So what I want to do is find out if anyone on the board has any other questions in terms of the height issue. General questions about the project are fine, and this has all been very helpful to understand. Mr. Ho.
Yeah, I just have one question. So you had a long recitation about the process you went through with the town board and the accommodations you made to the town in developing this particular project. And when I'm talking about the project, I'm talking about the second phase of the development. Did any of those accommodations that you made to the town have any impact on the roof height issue?
I understand your question.
We indicated that there was parking, that there was additional sewer access or water access that the developers accommodated the town planning board. And I'm just trying to figure out if any of that's germane to the height issue.
Oh, yeah, well, go ahead.
So one of the reasons, yes, you are correct. Some of it did allude to that. So you know, prior to when negotiate an overall public benefit and we look at a project pro forma, when you look at the overall financial readiness and financing and making sure a project actually works, we base that off of 100 units. Regulations had changed with Army Corps and numerous other things from the time we did the PUD back in, I believe it's 2017, to now, you know, 2022, when the proposal actually made it through approvals and we actually went through the long process with Army Corps. And that is where we're at with a third story and 66 units, is it's the unit count that provides a overall recapture on trying to provide all the community benefits, but still make the project financeable.
So, I mean, that's kind of what I was getting at. The 66 units are the lowest number of units that you can make, that you can include in this project to make it financially feasible from your perspective. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
And when you came up with the 66 units, were there any designs that accommodated a building of less than 66 units? I mean, that's the maximum amount that you could possibly get in this particular structure.
That's, that's correct, yeah, 66 units. And in a lot of what, you know, this building is a 66-unit building. If there was any type of, the question is out of greed or trying to gain the most units possible. We've explained that through the planning board through various avenues where the reason we're at 66 units and we can't try to go higher to reduce the story count, the same question came up with planning board, is because from our experience, seniors in our other complexes have requested two-bedroom units. A lot of the time, they're moving out of a home. They can't do away with everything that they own, so they move in, to move into a one-bedroom. And a lot of seniors through our surveys and different processes that we've had with other properties actually sleep in separate rooms due to sleep equipment and a number of other things, right? So when you add a high concentration of two-bedroom units, you drastically reduce your project pro forma and rent roll because one-bedrooms provide a smaller unit and usually a higher pricing structure. So we've designed this building specifically for the end user and the end demographic, and that's also a reason why we're at that breaking point of it being 66 units and trying to make it economically work and provide the bank something for a rent roll that's actually financeable.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm assuming in the necessity of your reduction from two buildings to one building, the Corps give you, like, you can operate within this specific-sized land?
Yes. So originally, we had, before we even knew what the whole process was, Teresa said, Teresa Beckner, our environmental attorney, is, we submitted the master plan that you folks have in front of you and that you saw on the TV. And the first comment they had brought up was availability of wetland credits, right? Which was another item that we didn't include in this application because I don't really feel like it's a community benefit that we provided, but it did cost to a tune of $320,000 to be able to get the property and the credits to be able to disturb some of the wetlands even on the left side of the property where the 66-unit buildings proposed. And first, first application at the master plan was availability of units, and this is too intrusive to the wildlife in the wetland area. So after that, our second submission, which is the submission that you folks are looking at today, was reducing the development area in half, providing the right-hand side of that lot is being forever wild, as Mr. Cappanero has brought to your attention. And we tried to maximize what that minimum unit count is to be able to take into account end demographic financing and a number of other things that I've already discussed.
I guess, putting it simply, you've, you went to three stories and used every bit of space that you could squeeze out of what they let you use.
Yes, sir, and the only, you know, the reason we're here is we've digested, mitigated every last available thing we have in our arsenal here to try to make this thing work.
So to summarize, as Mr. Latif brought up, you can't squeeze any more space out of the building itself in terms of height? And you're constrained by the size of the lot, so you can't increase on either end the size and go to two stories. It's what you got.
That's both, both items, yes.
Okay. Other questions by the board? Hearing none, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Okay, if you folks want to come on up and either one by one or together, whatever you'd prefer, if you could please give us your name and your address?
It's Sandy Bassino, and I'm on Butterfield Avenue in Alpaz. So I'm across the way, a different town. But I do look at the development. And this is my husband, John.
Could you just take the mic off?
Yep. You know me, daily, yeah. So my question is, this, we're having one building, and this is going to face Aqueduct Road, correct? So it's going to sit between Aqueduct Road and the bike path?
Yes.
Okay. If you were not given this variance, would you build a two-story senior complex?
No, without.
Yeah, we got to get this all on, so if he can sneak in and use the microphone, thank you.
Yeah, so even without this variance, it would still be a three-story building. The reason that we're here for this variance is try to make it look more rural residential with a gabled roof and to provide a more residential setting.
So the original plans were the flat roof?
Step up, I'm sorry.
The original plans were the flat roof? Three stories? No, it was two buildings?
The original plan was to have two buildings.
Two stories?
Two stories.
Right.
Each building would have a peak roof like that, total of 35 feet high.
Okay.
Army Corps said, no can do. We can only use half the land. So now we're going to a three-story building. So instead of having 100 apartments, we have 66.
Yeah, I understand that. But the original plan was a gabled roof on the two-story buildings?
Correct, yep.
Okay, so you're only going, was a flat roof change approved by the planning department?
It's my understanding that the flat roof was to, was an alternative in case they weren't able to get the height variance required.
Okay, but the original planning, I mean, the planning board only approved buildings when they were only two stories originally.
With gabled roofs.
With gabled roofs.
That I'm going to defer to Laura to answer.
Yeah, so the initial PUD was a much longer building with 100 units that was two stories.
Yeah, I guess what I'm watching is, was the original building plan that had approved the flat roof? It was a gabled roof on the original design?
Yeah, I mean.
So the flat roof would have to be applied.
So the planning board actually even looked at a flat roof for the two-story building during the original PUD approval. I remember at one point that they were trying to see if they could put a green rooftop, green civil, senior living area, like, on the roof of the two-story building. And the only reason I bring that up is the facades and the actual structure architecturally of the front building weren't, like, that wasn't called out in the approval of the planning board. So when they came back for Phase 2, they would have had the right to propose a flat two-story building.
That's really what I'm getting at.
Yeah, I mean, that wasn't called out in the original PUD approval. So the negotiation of the roof lines would have happened in Phase 2 anyway. The building was too preliminary at that point to know exactly what it was going to look like. Did have renderings of both kinds. I don't think that the planning board, I think they ended up not being able to do a flat roof on the two stories with all the green space that we wanted. But actually, if you look at this one, do you see those green circles in the middle of the building? That's because this rendition is when those two stories were flat roofed and they were looking at green space on the top of the buildings.
Okay.
But I don't think that ended up working out.
All right. But my question was, I just wanted to see if the flat roof was brought up before. And I understand what you're saying. If you don't get the approval to do three stories, two is economically not feasible. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I have one question. I mean, we're talking about the, the four foot below Aqueduct Road. These buildings are more visible from the river than they are from Aqueduct Road. How high is this above the roof line of the highest current apartment building?
I was just going to touch on that with you folks being over in Alpaz. So if you can kind of see here, the illustration is actually accurate to the foliage that's going to be remained. And when I say the trees and growth, it's stuff that's matured and has been there for a number of years that's over 40 feet tall. So this, this right here on the other side of the bike trail is is actually behind the rear, the rear pond to our second entrance of the first phase, which essentially screens it from the river in Alpaz. And that was something that we talked about.
One tree doesn't screen.
No, it's more than one tree, sir. It's a grove of trees that's at the high point of the bank above that, above that left, it would be the, the Schenectady side of Aqueduct Roads at that one pond.
No, I mean, you know, we've lived in, across from this junkyard for 25 years. And, you know, I, I could say that I some, sometime I missed a junkyard because we looked, it was always wild. In winter you'd saw junk cars, but during the summer it was always nice greenery. The apartments I had mixed feelings on from the beginning, but they're up there. The one thing I would really appreciate is on this building, it will be viewed from the river. A lot of people go by the river. And whoever came up with the white siding on those apartments should be shot. I shouldn't say that word in public here.
Not appropriate.
The, the ones that are multicolored, grays, they are much more appealing than white. Is this rendering going to be the colors of this unit? Because if this comes out stark white, it really would be upsetting.
You want to, you want to go to the, do you have the architectural review board package? By any chance? So most of the building right now doesn't, there, what we tried to do with the architectural design of this building that you can see in the renderings is, it's a long building. So we took into account, we actually had one original proposal we had into the planning board. And then we pulled it back because we realized how unhappy we were with it and then resubmitted again. And style housing look, which broke up the length of the building and we felt like more of like a, a natural break in the length with like almost like a residential row housing where it's different units, even though it was one large building. And right now it's a mixture of brick, which we saw a lot, Niskuna, some earth tones. And there's a mixture of white, which tied into the original development, which was something that the architectural review board and the planning board had kind of said, go with a color scheme that kind of blends in with the rest of the development. But that's something we could work on, sir, with the architectural review board and the planning board with maybe changing up siding colors. We're not opposed to that.
I guess being a critic from across the river, because we, we see it quite vividly every day. The, the white sticks out like a sore thumb, to be honest with you.
I think you make a lot of people happy.
Absolutely.
And my, the other comment that I have, you know, I, I hope that, I don't know how much of this development is going further upriver. But for 20 years directly across from our, well, not 20 years, 15 years directly across from our house, there's a pair of bald eagles. Because, you know, every other day we would see them in a tree. Now we see a white building. The bald eagles have moved upriver 100 yards, 200 yards, almost across from where the Alpaz Creek comes out. And they're, they're quite frequently. I, is this development continuing up the river or is this the end of it?
This is it.
I think as far as, well, go ahead. That's fine.
This is the limit of our property. I can't speak to, there was an existing PDD next door, but I don't know if that's been resurrected or not. It's not our property though, sir. This is the limit of river's length.
Elena, go ahead.
Yeah, so we're, not to be rude, sir, but we're getting way far astray from what this board has to consider tonight.
I'll just one more, one final comment.
If you want to make a comment, that's fine, but we're not going to do any more back and forth. If you want to speak with them outside and answer questions.
I'm sure everybody will agree with my comment. If, if this board plans on approving more projects going upriver, they really should have a study of the eagles in that area. They have come back, they're there frequently, and I would hate to see them get disturbed. If anybody wants to come to our house and sit in our front yard for eight hours, they'll see, I guarantee you they'll see the eagles. If they don't, I'll buy them a hamburger. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, sir. All right. Again, we're looking at the height variance requested. And that's the issue that's on the table. So does anyone wish to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the height variance during the course of the discussion. And I would discuss, you know, many, many topics that touch upon this development. But for, you know, this board's perspective and what we're here to do tonight is to basically look at a six-foot height variance. And one of the questions, the, the first question we must ask is, Mr. Cappanero indicated, is, is there a, other alternative feasible means to achieve the same end? The, the goal was to put senior apartments. We had a significant discussion about the, the scope of the original proposal and the limitations that were placed on this property by the Army Corps of Engineers primarily. And the applicant has reduced, taken steps to reduce the size of the project in conjunction with reducing that size of the project. He has, or the applicant has needed this height variance. There's really no alternative, feasible alternative to the existing application, with the exception of a flat roof that's proposed that wouldn't need the variance. However, the planning board has indicated that they have a, upon their review, they believe that the gabled roof style is more in line with the character of Niskuna. Will granting the variance produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood? Again, to a certain extent, to certain adjacent landowners, there may be an effect. But I don't know that that's necessarily dispositive. And I don't know that there's any other way to avoid that effect, even with a flat roof. I don't know that the, the landowners on the other side of Aqueduct Road wouldn't be adversely impacted in terms of sightlines, whether irrespective of what type of roof was installed. Whether the variance is substantial, certainly it's substantial, given the size of the project. However, the size of the project in and of itself is substantial, but the height variance is not excessive in the, in the, in terms of the request for six feet, especially in light of the information with respect to the grading issue and the fact that the project sits four feet below the road. Whether the variance will have any adverse physical or environmental effects on the neighborhood or district, no, I don't believe so. Again, we're just dealing with the height variance and the height in and of itself, I don't believe would have any adverse physical or environmental effects. Whether this alleged difficulty was self-created, to a certain extent it was because the applicant chose this project. And, but with respect to the issues, with respect to the Army Corps of Engineers and the limitations in the project and the use of the lot in and of itself, I, I think that, that that is not a controlling factor in, in any way. So for all those reasons, I would move to grant the variance.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I would second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
My vote is going to be a no. And the only reason I'm going to say a no, again, this will set precedent as the applicant has used other cases we approved as a precedent that we have approved it in the past. So I like the design. I think they did a great job on all the work they did. It's unfortunate situation with the Army Corps coming in and crushing the, the first plan they have. But again, my only no because it would set precedent. And to me, it was only two feet, not the six feet, because you already had the four feet taken care of by the road. So for all these reasons, no.
Ms. Pacico?
I vote yes. But I want to commend the designers on looking at the effects of what having a flat roof would be. Certainly for the character of the neighborhood. I would be certainly concerned if there was no screening in the flat roof scenario for anybody who's looking at it across the river as well as next door and across the road. So for that reason, I vote yes.
Mr. Daley?
I'm going to vote.
Mr. Green?
Yeah, I'm going to vote yes, but I also want to add, I, I, from the information that I've heard this evening, the package provided, the information, I mean, this is a one-off. So I don't see any precedent anywhere. This is, seems to me to be absolutely of its own and unique.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairperson Ferrari.
This is an interesting situation and I, I feel compelled to make sure that people understand that the planning board and what the planning board recommended, and it was a recommendation, uses an entirely different criteria than this board. And I hear a lot about the planning board said this and the planning board did that and the planning board said approve it. That's a recommendation and that is not the criteria that we look at. We have a very clear statutory criteria that we're supposed to apply to a project like this. Have there been projects approved for height variances? Yes, we just approved one for GE. The difference being is the GE property was huge. The height variance applied to a building that was not visible from anywhere that the public was. It was entirely on their own property with no neighbors. I would also state, and we're talking about precedent, that we denied a variance for the luxury apartments across from Shoprite, which wasn't mentioned in anyone's presentation, for precisely this same reason. It exceeded the height. They, what I will say, and I, and I credit you folks greatly for this, is that they refused to go to a flat roof. Well, guess what they have right now? A flat roof. Because that's the only way they could build it. But they, to this board, they refused to work with us. So there is and are several situations where we've denied height variances, primarily because the applicant was not willing to work with us. I look at this project and we're advised by the applicant that when we're talking about the least restrictive alternative, that if we can't get the variance, we'll build a flat roof. Well, to me that says there's a less restrictive alternative that they will accept, even though they like the gabled roof. As I look at the criteria here, is there a less restrictive alternative? Yes. Is this self-created? I actually don't think it is because we wouldn't even be here except for an unanticipated interjection by the Corps of Engineers. Not that it was bad, but it was unanticipated. In terms of is this substantial, I agree that as a whole, it's substantial. I think that's mitigated some by the fact that, as you guys have pointed out, the applicants pointed out, when you view this from Aqueduct Road, you're really looking at probably about a, a two inch, two foot height differential, really. I have a concern. It, it's easy to say it's not going to impact the neighborhood, but none of us live in the neighborhood at all. And I think that for someone who lives across Aqueduct Road or across the river, you've got to take those things into consideration. I like the project. I think it's, it's attractive. I wish it was two stories and I wish you had 100 apartments, but you don't. As I apply the criteria, I'm looking at, given the fact that really we're looking practically at a two-foot height differential, I'm going to vote yes for the project. I, I can't strongly emphasize enough, though, the, the comments these folks are making from a visual standpoint, it will be extremely disappointing to me personally and as a member of this board if their concerns are not addressed by you folks. The vote is five to two. Your variance is granted. Good luck with your project, but please work with these folks.
We will.
Thank you.
Be sure of that. Thank you very much.
And I'm not going to say last but not least, but I, whoa, where are you going? We got one more, Vinnie.
We need you. We need you, Vinnie.
We do need you, Vinnie. We, we don't want, we don't want, Mr. Kaufman, correct?
Yes.
We don't want Mr. Kaufman to feel that he got short-sheated here or anything.
I appreciate that.
Please read the, the seventh and final.
Appealed by Daniel Kaufman, agent for variance from section 220-10E1 of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna. As it applies to the property, it's 1747 Union Street, Niskuna, New York, located in the CN Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District to construct a 12-foot by 41-foot addition exceeding the expansion limit of 25% district regulations. Section 220-10E1 construct states that the permitted principal uses limited to reuse and/or expansion by not more than 20% of, 25% of an existing building. As applied to the 1,455 square foot existing retail and service store, the allowable area for expansion would be 364 square feet. As proposed, the seven-page drawing set entitled Gas Station Edition, 1747 Union Street, Schenectady, New York, Rosada Mart Salcon by Kobo Court Engineering, PPP LLC, shows a 497, 92 square foot addition to the existing retail and service store building or a 33.8% expansion. Therefore, 128 square foot or 8.8% variance is required. 23 notices were mailed, zero responses. We received a county referral and a planning board recommendation. The county deferred to local consideration, no significant county-wide or inter, inter-community impact. In the planning board's referral, they noted that the conservation, sorry. The Conservation Advisory Council reviewed the project during their regularly scheduled meeting on 8/322 and requested adding more landscaping to the property. The Complete Streets Committee reviewed the project on 7/29 and requested better delineation of the entrances and exits onto Van Antwerp Road to protect pedestrians. And the planning board made the following recommendation. The planning board voted 6-1 that there was no effect on the comprehensive plan. The one member who voted that the project would affect the plan indicated they thought there would be an increased risk to pedestrian safety. For suitability of use, the planning board voted 6-1 that it is a suitable use. They felt that the traffic flow on the site may be improved through site plan. They noted that the project affords the planning board the opportunity to require a general cleanup of the building and surrounding grounds. And the one member who dissented felt that they believed the 25% expansion allowed the zoning code is sufficient. The planning board voted 6-1 to make a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals to grant the area variance.
Yes. My turn?
Your turn. Sorry.
No problem, sir.
Tell us who you are. I was reading your plans. Tell us who you are and about your project.
My name is Daniel Kaufman. I own Kobo Court Engineering, PLC. And what we are doing is we're adding, what we are proposing is add 492 square feet to the building over here. I do have a new that I brought with me to deal with some of the parking issues that I think is a little better layout. So I'll keep one and half the other 10 around, or need all 10, but that's what Quark told me to bring, so. I already, I brought basically, I printed out the three pages that basically show all the improvements. Some of the other sheets are just notes. So I didn't really make copies of those. Those sheets didn't change, because I think you already have sets of plans that control the notes. So I just brought the ones that actually are, the ones that I've changed. So the, what we're looking at here is the reasons for doing these improvements is the local populace has come to the owner and to the gas station, and they've been asking for more choices of food, more choices of, more choices of different supplies they can buy. There is no grocery store locally. And so the local populace would like to come. Now, I realize some of the local populace is actually in Schenectady, not Niskuna, because this is actually right on the town line. So there is, Van Antwerp is the actual separation. So this is, this gas station serves both communities, not just, not just Niskuna. And that is, I know, I know it's, but of course, the property is in Niskuna. The, my understanding from according to the owner, Sal, he has told me that a lot of his customers are of the older generation, 55 and older possibly. I can't speak to exactly how many, but approximately. And they have been wanting to have more choices and different types of food to choose from and more choices to get around with. There is already sidewalks on both sides of the property. On both on the, on the Van Antwerp Road and on Union Street. Well, the, pretty much, they bought this building just a few, just recently, last, like, just last like two years. But Mr. Khan bought it, and he wants to fix it up. So he does want to remove all the, there's some growth in the back of the building. Some of the buildings gotten, is a little old. He wants to fix up the bathrooms. The bathroom doors right now are, are, are old. Only some, one of them is only like two foot, six inches wide, which is not, that makes it difficult to use. So he has, but as part of the, he wants to make the the east side of the building better. Now, one of the things that was discussed was the was that the propane storage right now does not have boughs to protect it. We want to move it to the east side of the building and put boughs there to protect the, protect that, protect the propane tanks, propane, propane. The dumpster before, right now is a, is a one, the north, north area. We want to now move it to, if you see on the plan, move it, move it right to, right next to the building. That would make it more accessible. The tanker trucks only come once every 10 days. So it's not like a frequent time, and we're not, we're not increasing the number of pumps. So there's not going to be increase in the amount of times the tanker is going to be coming. All we're doing is increasing the choices of food and merchandise to make, to make things more accessible to the local populace. And we also want to, what was requirement, my understanding was that since we're adding 500 square feet, we have to actually have nine parking spaces and additional one for an employee. So that's why we're showing 10 parking spaces. So the, right now, the parking is not that delineated, striping-wise. As the improvements, if these improvements are approved, of course, we would then stripe the, stripe and show appropriate directional for safety, the traffic. So the, there was, I think there was discussion from the planning board about possibly banking one of the parking spaces. I'll leave it up to yourselves and the planning board if they want to only allow us to have only nine. We're okay with having 10. We'd like to make that 10. And the box truck delivery, there's, that happens some three times a week. So it's gonna be on the delivery, it'll be a delivery door right over here on the, I see, on the east side of buildings. Okay, I'll get messed up. On the east side of buildings. So that's where the, the guy, the box truck delivery will be right there. So on the west side will be the storage, the propane storage and the ice coolers. And so we would then basically make it so it's a much more, if you look at the rendering, it's now, it's gonna be, it's gonna look, we're gonna look much better from the outside with the, with a nice continuous sidewalk, easily accessible. We're gonna, of course, provide a one handicap spot and over there with five feet, so that makes it good for handicap people. Putting, there was a previous plan about putting a handicap spot right at the building. That's really not going to be good traffic-wise to actually try to get around the building. Because a lot, some people sometimes just will just park right there, which by now, having all the striped parking is going to encourage people to stop parking right in front of the building, hopefully. And that would, I would, that would definitely make things a lot more safe. My understanding also was that there was, Laura, maybe Laura should talk to me about this, that the police and fire were consulted with the layout? And they didn't, and they do, they do prefer to have the four entrances?
Well, they do, but Keith, I don't know if you want to sort of hone him in on the 25%.
Well, you sat here for so long, I was trying not to, not, not to restrict it. As, as I understand this, are the pumps being changed at all?
No.
So in essence, what's going on is, is you have a building of a certain size right now.
Yes.
They want to put a larger, they want to expand the building.
Yes.
And they're gonna dress it up so it looks pretty.
Yes.
They're gonna install more parking, parking spaces because of the expanded building.
Yes.
Maybe your, your boss there is gonna stop flying the crazy banners and things that he's not supposed to, right?
Um, I can, I can definitely tell him to do that if.
I think, well, that has no effect on, I just think, you know, we're telling other business owners not to do that. I think he could jump in and get on the.
Okay, I, I would.
Aesthetically, it doesn't look.
Fully aware of, but that is, I can, I can definitely.
Yeah.
I can definitely.
So really, just looking at an expansion of the building, he's gonna, he's gonna improve some of the aesthetics, both of the building
Yes.
and around the lot, et cetera, right?
Yes.
And the expansion is being done because he's gonna provide different types of groceries, different types of food, make it a little bit more accessible.
Yes.
That type of thing.
Yes.
Anything else you think we should know?
Um, I'll leave it up to you to ask me questions, and if I can think of something else, I will.
That sounds like a winner. I'm gonna open this up to the rest of the board if they have questions about. This is a rather unusual one we don't often deal with.
I can appreciate that.
So I appreciate the information you provided, and, and I'm gonna open it up if the board has any questions.
Mr. Kaufman, with respect to the addition to the physical layout of the building, that's not gonna increase fuel deliveries, correct?
Not, that's not planned on. I mean, I guess it could, because now it's, I mean, you could have more people here. I, I mean, you're talking about increase of.
Well, you told me, or you told originally, you said that there was a fuel delivery every 10 days. Is that gonna increase?
Um, it's not expected to, but I mean, I can't say it won't.
So generally, so I'm trying to ascertain whether there's gonna be an impact on the neighborhood, the environmental impact on the neighborhood. And I guess what you're telling me to, I mean, I'm not gonna put words in your mouth, but if you get the addition that you're talking about to the structure, you're gonna have more food, that's gonna lure in more people, which will potentially, you'll go through fuel at a faster rate and need additional deliveries. Is that what you're saying?
It is not a plan on that they will have more deliveries of food. They only plan on having the three times of the, of the box truck to come around. It is not planned on that they will have more gas, but I can't say they won't, because I mean, it is possible that.
I'm not asking possibilities and need to guarantee anything. I'm saying, as you sit here today, that's not contemplated. Something that should be contemplated in determining or in evaluating the variance and its impact on the neighborhood. You're saying it's not contemplated presently, correct?
I, we have not done a traffic study, no.
Okay. I wasn't really asking about traffic. I was just asking about fuel deliveries and truck speed.
I mean, he has told me that he is not expecting to have more deliveries than, than once every 10 days. He's not expecting it.
Do you believe the addition is gonna have an impact on the number of vehicles that are stopping at this location?
I do believe that there will be an increase in the amount of people coming to it. I don't think it would come for more increase of, for gas. I think it'd come for more for increase in food.
Okay. But you wouldn't anticipate there's gonna be an increase in the flow of traffic into the property?
Yes.
And and I, and you've discussed with the planning board considerations with respect to the flow of traffic to accommodate that?
Yes.
Okay. But you haven't done the traffic study?
No, I have not. If that is, if that is a requirement, then, then we will have to do that. That's not, they have not told me that they have required.
It sounded like from your initial presentation that, that the local people that have been talking to him are people who are within walking distance?
Yes. Yes. I mean, there is a significant walking populace. This is a sidewalk and, and, and there is, so there is, I have seen that, that this is also, sometimes you can get a lot of walking, you can get some pedestrian traffic, not just car traffic.
Okay. Other questions by the board?
If I may, good evening. How are you?
Thank you.
Richard Green.
Thank you, Richard.
When you're on Union Street looking at the property, you have Van Antwerp Road on the right, correct?
Yes.
And the property on the right-hand side of this business is Bank of America, correct?
Yes.
And, you know, I did drive by there this morning, as a matter of fact, on my way to pick up my dry cleaning. And I, and I took a good look from across the street. And I noticed that it seemed to me there was a nice buffer between the Bank of America drive-through and the property that we're talking about today.
Yes.
Is, if this board were to grant the increase in size of the footprint of the building, would it be moving closer toward that Bank of America side?
Yes, it would be.
What considerations, if any, or what can you share with the board? What, if anything, that might be done additional to further enhance the buffer between the bank property, which is a bank, and this commercial property, which is a convenience, it's a combination.
Yes, yes. Yes. I mean, one of the things that we have done is the gas meter used to be, used to be on the, on the east side of the building. Now we, now we're gonna put it on the north side of the building. So that, so that, so that, that will not cause any traffic issues of driving around the, around the building. We also, what we propose is to only have traffic one way around the building, just to go going south.
That's the arrow that's shown here.
Yes. That, that would then, because really, there's not, there's really only about 25 feet, which is, okay, yes, you could have two-way traffic there. But like you're saying, that's not really feasible, because you will have, sometimes you'll have trucks that will be possibly making it, making it difficult. And you only have about 12, about 13 to 14 feet with that fourth, fourth parking space. Anyways, around the building, so really, it should only be one-way traffic going south. And that's the reason why I, that's the reason why I proposed that. And that will make it safer to, if we have directional arrows that just encourage people to only drive one way around there.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And what I'm, I'm not really saying anything. I'm really asking.
Okay.
Just so it's clear that, you know, I'm asking you. Is the, is, are you familiar with the buffer between the east side of the building and the proposed extension and the, the west side of the Bank of America? The tree line there. There seem to be a nice tree line there. Is that something that's gonna be maintained?
Um, yes. We're not going to be tearing down any of those trees, no.
Is there anything else that is been contemplated or thought of to maintain? Would appear to me at, you know, my looking at it as a nice buffer, especially given the fact that the application here is, if granted, moving the building closer to that buffer area?
Are you asking if we could, like, extend this curb further up?
I'm not.
Or maybe.
I'm just asking what your thoughts are. I'm not.
That is a possibility. I mean, one of the things over on the west side, we're talking about adding some curb right here to protect that, that tent's parking space. And, and we could put some trees, we could put a tree there. And add a tree there and put some plantings there. And so that, yes, we, yes. We, it is definitely, we, we, we could, we could extend our curb and then, and put some more planting there if that is a requirement of this board or a requirement of the planning board.
Just so, you know, I'm not asking you to do anything.
I understand.
I'm just asking what consideration you've made to maintain or enhance the separation of the two properties, F and D, the board grants this request to expand the building closer toward the property line.
I mean.
Are you open, are you open to the consideration, should the planning board or this?
I, my, my understanding is yes. I mean, I'd have to clarify that with the owner to see.
Gotcha.
He's not here presently.
That's okay.
But I, I know he does want to beautify the property. And I don't, I don't think he's going to be, if, if this, if you, if you fully grant this, then I, then, then he would definitely would be very interested in doing whatever he could to, to improve the property.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions by the board?
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Question about that east property line area.
Yes.
Based on the plans that have been submitted and updated, the curbs are open there. Do you know if there's a large amount of traffic that actually uses that as access to your property or to this property?
There, there, I mean, I have seen people just drive right up, just drive right up, and because there is no curb right now, you know, blocking anybody. That's the reason why I propose to have, to actually have this curb right here at the northeast, at the northwest corner, to stop people from basically just driving right over. And especially when you, if you have somebody parked there, those, those people have to be protected by that. At the same time, it is easier for people to turn around if you have all four, all four entrances. So that's the reason why, why, why we would still prefer to have the four, the four entrances, even though some of them, I realize, are a little wider than, than usual. There is no other curb. Um, there is no other, um, curb there if, um, well, there's curbs along the Union Street, but there is no curb, um, protecting the gas, um, between those two right now. It's just, it's, it's just a flat entrance right now. Um, if that is, um, if, if, if you'd like to have a curb there, I guess that's, that is something we could propose to protect, protect the, um, the gas.
That's outside our bailiwick, so.
Okay, all right, I understand. There might be something the planning board might.
Yeah, yeah, something to discuss with them, I would say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I have to ask the question as ridiculous as it sounds. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard? Hearing no speak up. Would anyone like to make a motion? We have just the one variance for 128 square foot.
I will, uh, move to, uh, approve the, uh, variance. Um, I'm, I'm familiar with this, uh, location, um, and, um, I think the, uh, proposal will enhance, um, the lot as a whole. Um, I, it seems to me that there's still some issues that have to be fleshed out with the planning board, um, but they're, uh, not directly germane to what we're looking at, and that is, um, the addition of, uh, the additional square footage to this property and whether, um, the applicant's, um, goals can be achieved by any other feasible means. Um, in this case, the applicant wants to increase the size of, um, his, uh, food delivery, um, and convenience services, so, um, he needs the additional space to do that. Um, there's no other place, uh, feasibly on the property to increase the size of the property or increase the size of the, uh, convenience area. Um, will the, uh, variance produce an undesirable change in the neighborhood? Um, you know, there were some concerns raised about, um, the increase in, in usage to the property because of additional services that are gonna be provided, additional food items that are gonna be provided, but as a whole, um, the character of the, uh, property and its use is gonna continue in the same way that it's, it's always been, uh, used, um, just with, uh, better stuff, um, to eat. Um, I assume. Um, whether the variance is substantial, um, I would say that the addition, um, as proposed is a substantial variance, um, will have an adverse, uh, physical or environmental effect on the neighborhood. Um, I think most of the concerns would be, um, directed to the planning board, um, and their expertise in terms of laying out the, uh, laying out the, the, the plans and any modifications that might be made to enhance, um, the aesthetic, uh, value of the property as we've discussed tonight, as well as, uh, address any kind of, um, safety issues related to traffic and, 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 uh, traffic flow within the property. Um, was the, um, difficulty, uh, self-created? Um, in this case, I don't really believe, although obviously the applicant has a choice as to whether to engage in this type of, uh, project or not. I think the, uh, goal of enhancing, um, uh, an existing parcel as contemplated isn't necessarily, uh, self-created. Um, and, uh, for those reasons, uh, I would, uh, move to approve the variance.
We have a motion. Is there a second? I'll second the motion. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the rule.
Mr. Hoke?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. Pacico?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Mr. Aldridge.
Mr. Green?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairperson Frere?
Yes, and I would echo what Mr. Hoke has said, but also point out that if indeed the owner is, uh, genuinely interested in cleaning up the property, taking care of it, making aesthetic improvements, it should have an improved effect on the neighborhood.
Thank you.
For that reason.
And you were mentioning about the banners. I can, uh, we'll definitely talk to.
Please do. For that reason, uh, you've got a 7-0 and your requested variance is granted. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your patience.
I, I thank you all.
I think you were the latest out.
Motion to adjourn?
No, we're getting there. We have a motion. We'll adjourn.
Take a motion.
Adjourn, please.
Okay.
Yes.
Voice called all in favor.
Aye.
Well, this curve is just here. We're putting curve here.
If you're putting curve here, can you see if you can put some guard in there?
I can, I can, I can, I can ask him that. I understand.